To open session, this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for June 28, 2022, beginning at 7:05. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustees may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the Administration Building. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Our board meetings are open to the public and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting and we have business to conduct, disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting, or speaks when others are speaking, may be asked to leave, or be escorted out by the security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but we must insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Will Banks in leading us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions, excuse me, to those around you. And now if you would join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Next, we will consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and we have several this evening. So first, I'd like to recommend that the Board ratify the appointments of these individuals as discussed in closed session. We have an Executive Director of Financial Services, Principal for Adams Elementary, Principal for Hale Elementary, Assistant Principals, two for Seguin High School, Assistant Principal for Mary Moore, and Assistant Principal for South Davis, and an Assistant Principal for Webb Elementary.
Do I have a motion? I have a second. Do you have a motion by Ms. McMurro, and a second by Mr. Will Banks?
And motion passes in the affirmative. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and thank you to the Board. We'll start with some introductions. Again, these are ratifications. These individuals have begun their transition work. And so first is Executive Director for Financial Services is Bridget Lewis. Bridget comes to us, actually, most recently, the interim Executive Director, has been the Director of Accounting as well here in Arlington ISD, has been in Everman ISD as the Business Manager, and Academy, Manera Academy Charter School, the Service Center in Region 11, current Regional Water District, Kennedale as well, and you see her bio there. Bridget attended East Mississippi Community College and Northwood University for Bachelor of Business Administration, and also has her Masters in Business Administration. Congratulations to Bridget, outstanding individual as well. Next, the Principal for Adams Elementary, Nathan Tave. You can applaud. Yeah. Nathan Tave. So Nathan attended Jarvis Christian College for Bachelor of Science, and his Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice and Education, and you see his bio there as well on the screen. Master of Ed from Concordia University in Ed Administration. Most recently, the interim Principal at Adams Elementary, has been an Assistant Principal at Adams Elementary, and has been a sixth grade teacher at Adams Elementary. Also has worked in Dallas ISD as a sixth grade teacher, and Irving as a third grade teacher, spent some time at Uplift Education, Dallas Can Academy, has been an alternative ISS teacher for us at Blanton, and has also been in Fort Worth as a sixth grade Social Studies. But today, he's the Principal of Adams Elementary, so congratulations, Nathan. Next, the Principal for Hale Elementary is Lorene Solis Kozlowski, and she attended University of Texas at Arlington for Bachelor of Arts, and you see that on the screen as well. UT Arlington for Master of Education in Ed Leadership and Policy Studies. Most recently was our Assistant Principal at Hale Elementary, has been in Mansfield ISD and taught fourth grade writing, language arts, social studies. Also has been in Irving with fifth grade math, third grade bilingual, first grade bilingual. Congratulations to Lorene. Next, the Assistant Principal for Seguin High School is Christopher Arsenault. Mr. Arsenault attended Community College of the Air Force as Associate for Applied Science, Stephen F. Austin for Bachelor of Science, and SMU for Master of Education. Most recently, Christopher was a Principal Resident at Patrick Elementary School, has also been a math teacher at Bowie High School, and Algebra I teacher at Bowie High School, a geometry and advanced Algebra II teacher, and has also taught in Acadogus ISD, Credit Recovery, and Physics and Algebra II. So congratulations to Mr. Arsenault. Next, another Assistant Principal for Seguin, and that is Ty Anavi Coronado. She attended the University of Texas at Austin for Bachelor of Science in Chemistry, South Dakota State University for Master of Science in Chemistry. You see her bio as well there. Most recently, she was the Assistant Principal at Bailey Junior High, has taught Chemistry and IB at Bowie High School, has been in Dallas ISD as a pre-biology, pre-AP Biology teacher, Irving ISD in Physics and pre-AP Chemistry, and Austin ISD as an apprentice teacher for pre-AP Chemistry, Chemistry, and a substitute teacher. So congratulations to Ms. Coronado. Next, the Assistant Principal for Mary Moore is Ravine Jackson. She attended University of Texas at Arlington for Bachelor of Arts in Psychology, Dallas Baptist University for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership, and most recently was the Instructional Coach at Little Elementary, has taught second grade at Sterrett, first grade ESL at Sterrett, and has also been in Grand Prairie as a second grade teacher, and a fifth grade math and science teacher at the STEM Academy. So congratulations to Ms. Jackson. Next, the Assistant Principal for South Davis, Samantha Cabrera. Samantha attended Southwestern Adventist University for Bachelor of Science in Social Studies, SMU for Master of Ed. Most recently was our Principal Resident at South Davis Elementary, has been an eighth grade teacher at Carter Junior High, has been in Irving ISD as a Social Studies teacher, an online teacher in different places in China, and you see her bio, very impressive there, has also been an RTI Interventionist, and a substitute teacher, and a Social Studies teacher. So congratulations to Ms. Cabrera. Last but not least is the Assistant Principal for Webb Elementary, Morgan Alexander. Morgan attended Wayland Baptist University for Bachelor of Arts in Music, and Southern Methodist University for Master of Ed. Most recently, Morgan was our Principal Resident at Peach Elementary, and has also been a pre-K fifth grade teacher, ELR teacher at Johns, and a fifth grade teacher at Big Springs Intermediate as well. If you notice, some of the appointees tonight were our Principal Residents, and that's an outstanding partnership we have with SMU and our OSL, Office of School Leadership, and their support. So these are outstanding candidates, all of them, so congratulations to all. Thank you.
Now we come to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who wish to address the Board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net/BoardMeetingSpeakerRequest. No later than 3:00 PM the day of the Board Meeting. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the Board regarding agenda items?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Ms. Benjamin, do we have anyone registered for non-agenda items?
No, ma'am. Our only registered person withdrew that registration.
Next, we'll have a discussion about our 2019 bond update.
Thank you, President Fowler. And so, Mr. Horn, if you're ready for our 2019 bond update. Frank, do you have that? Okay. So this, tonight, we bring this item aboard to discuss our 2019 program budget. And as you heard from the CBOC last time, the cost of certain materials and construction has continued to rise. And so with that cost increase, it was important for us to bring to the Board some considerations. And accounting for that cost, the considerations for what we consider, and I think you'll hear tonight and be able to interact on that, what we consider critical projects. And the reason we bring this forward is because this is an opportunity for us to get clear collaboration and calibration, and then ultimately approval by the Board, to get clarity on those critical items that we must continue to implement with our bond, regardless of the cost at this point. We do anticipate that there will be variability in that cost increase that we're seeing today. So this is, while the Board is considering the critical projects, that variability will always continue to be something back inform to the Board, because that'll give us opportunities to make other decisions with the remaining bond projects. But tonight really is that opportunity for the Board to have consideration for those critical needs, so that we have clear direction as these costs continue to rise. I would say this is the beginning of the story, certainly not the end of the story. And you'll hear that several times tonight, including when we present our scores, it's the beginning of a story. But it's the beginning of a story, and I think it's going to be imperative on all of us to be mindful of these cost increases, get continual updates with the Board, but also have clear direction from staff. So, Mr. Horn, with that, take us through the presentation that I know may seem brief, but it took you weeks and weeks of much work to do. So, Mr. Horn.
Certainly. President Fowler, members of the Board, Dr. Cavassos, thank you for this time, and no doubt you've seen a lot of information. And to your point, Dr. Cavassos, it took all of us, and Mr. Hibbs, you were here when we did this, right? When we developed this, and it took us approximately two years to develop this bond, and now we're thrust into trying to redevelop this bond in a period of just weeks, right? It seems like. So, but Frank, thank you for bringing this up. We have a bit of revised presentation for you. And I'll start with the next slide, Frank, please, just to take you and our public through how we got here, and this is the bond in one slide essentially. In November of 2019, our community voted on this bond referendum, and there were four key areas that we looked at. We always look at condition deficiency and lifecycle, but there are also other additions and renovations that we make to address critical needs, and whether it be for programming or for infrastructure. And so you see the four areas there. Number one, programming, and one of those items that we looked at was developing a plan for a full-day pre-K. We wanted to continue to develop the Fine Arts and Dual Language Academies, and extend that program into the junior high level, and into the high school or the secondary level. And then we had the expansion of our Career Tech Program, which has been extremely popular at the Dan Diaper Career and Technical Center. Then we have educational adequacy, which for us means accessible playgrounds, right? That's just one example, and probably the most notable example that we looked at. In addition to further facility updates for our fine arts, beyond what we've done with the Center for Visual and Performing Arts, but at our junior highs and our high school programs to improve their stage areas or platforms, if you will, and those facilities that support dance, and band, and orchestra, and so forth. And then further athletic facility updates, and that's a lot of things. It's updates to our stadiums, which we'll talk a bit more about here in a bit, but more importantly, systems like our turf systems at the secondary level. We did an extensive rework of our junior high football fields, if you will, our athletic areas during the 2014 bond program, but our high school programs needed a replacement of turf and track systems as well to keep those safe for our students. And then on to utilization. This centers around a lot, this centers around our East Arlington Plan, where we took four schools, Knox, Roark, Thornton, and Berry, and consolidated those into two, and we're rebuilding two new elementary schools at this time. Those are coming out of the ground nicely. We have, as we call it, red iron or steel coming off the concrete in those two, in those areas, and so we're moving along nicely with that. But that also encompassed a change in addition at Crowe Elementary School. It encompassed maneuvering our boundaries a bit to bring kids closer, or students, I should say, closer to their home campus. And the big final piece to that puzzle, which we'll talk a bit more about, is Carter. The replacement for Carter Junior High School, and how critical it is to bring that campus closer to those students that they serve. And that piece is, if you all remember, taking where the Knox campus is today, or Temporary Thornton, so pardon me for all the different names, but that's what it is. It's a Temporary Thornton at the Knox location, and we have Westler Park next to that. We've negotiated an arrangement with the city to exchange property, that Westler Park property, and the Roark Elementary School property, just less than a mile away, to create a larger site for the new junior high school. So that's the utilization piece. And this stems into, goes into other campuses as well. And so we've looked at, and where we're at today is almost, I would say, probably, we're probably four months away from really beginning to see the finished product at Webb, and then be able to consider tearing down the old Webb, which was initially Nichols Junior High School. So that's the utilization piece. And then we have the facility condition piece, which really attacks every campus we have in the district. And it looks at just the everyday changes that we need to make to improve and make the facility look nicer, and fresher, and cleaner. Things like restroom renovations, ceiling and lighting improvements to brighten campuses up, and we've all seen the improvements that that can make when you look at a campus, an older campus like Crowe, and what we did to it, and to be able to lighten the corridors up with newer lighting. So facility and condition deficiencies is a big category. And paramount, and first and foremost in that is safety and security and ADA needs. So we'll address those first. So the next slide, please. I won't go into great detail, this is just more to center us and show us that these were the numbers, this is what the voters approved, 966 million. What I'm talking about primarily is the top line, the 852,726-plus dollars for facilities. Next slide, please. So I'll jump right into where, why we're here, and what we're talking about today. We all no doubt have seen this level of unprecedented inflation that's hit us both in our homes, and now even here within our school construction program. And so we've gone to what we believe is the most notable and most reliable source in our industry, which is the Association of General Contractors of America, the AGC, as we call it, and which looks at all of the inputs, all the construction inputs, and tries to quantify, if you will, at least approximate what we've seen in the way of inflation, and how hard it's been hit. What I'll share with you on the next slide, I'll kind of lead in the next slide, when we look at construction, we look at construction inputs, our supply inputs, and I'll talk more about how we compare that to what we do every day. But moreover, the things that have impacted us greatly, obviously, the COVID pandemic, and I think we did a great job as a district, and the Board did a great job to support us and allow us to accelerate what we were doing in Phase 1, but, and I'll have a timeline that I show you here in just a bit, that'll kind of give you an idea of what we were able to gain, but then now it's starting to impact us. We're starting to see that we're catching up to that lag that occurred. Increased material costs, supply chain shortages, and interruptions to the materials that we purchase every day. Labor shortages has been another big deal that we've had to look at. We're just competing against so many other industries in our area, and the cost increased for that labor. And then finally, we all know it's probably put a cap on the whole thing, but the invasion of Ukraine has impacted us greatly as well, because so many raw materials come out of that area. So the inset there that I have for you just kind of gives you an idea of the increase in the top line on steel mill products. That impacts us probably greater than anything else, because we use steel not only to erect the facility, but steel to reinforce our concrete, steel in the chairs that we put in the classrooms, and steel in the desks, and so forth, stainless steel in the kitchen equipment, and kitchen equipment's a big part of our expense in a new facility. So let's go to the next slide, please. Where I'll start here is, just like the top line says, construction projects are very unique. It's very different than building a watch, or building a computer. Those inputs are a little easier to quantify, and the costs are more, although they are volatile too, it's a little easier to control those. And every Dell computer of a certain model and make is the same, right? And so whereas every construction project is different, Webb is different than Thornton, Thornton different than Berry, the needs at Crowe are different than what we're going to experience at Arlington High. It's like artwork, you know? Everything has a life of its own, and it's just different in so many ways. And so what we have to do is look at the input, or pardon me, the inputs cost, or the PPI, in this case, the Producer Price Index, for all the raw materials that go into building a facility, and then we take and we compare that against our bid prices. And so like I was mentioning earlier, we enjoyed bid, low bid prices early on, and when everybody else kind of took a break and said, hey, COVID's here, and let's just go home, and let's take a little bit to kind of figure out where we're going, you charged us, and you allowed us to keep going, and we did. And thanks to Mr. Mike Parkes, who's our Director of Facility Plan and Construction, he really buckled down, and we went after it, and we got aggressive. Our purchasing department helped us to accelerate bids, and we enjoyed some very, very fruitful pricing, some low pricing, if you will. And many of our projects you'll see in a bit came in under budget or at budget, big projects like Webb, and Thornton, and Berry, and that helped us a lot. However, the lag is gone, and you can see from the inset there that our bid prices are starting to catch up, and I would argue that this doesn't come all the way to today, and here we are in June of 2022. But I would argue that probably we're at the point where the two lines are intersecting one another now. And so we may, to some discussion we've had in other committees, we may start to see some of the inputs go down, but the suppliers are still going to hold that price for a while, because many of those suppliers have lost money for the last 18 months to two years, and they're set to try to recover, right? They're in business to make a profit, not lose money. So while we may see inputs start to decline a bit, everything points to that line of our bid pricing holding and leveling off, and it could start to dip, but there are a lot of factors that might impact that. So I'm not sure exactly where that's going to go yet. We'll learn a lot more over the next few months, but this gives you a pretty good picture of kind of what we've experienced to date. So next slide, please. So now the timeline or the impact. This is just in narrative form, but you can see a little bit of what I've talked about so far. When you look at our Gun project, Gun Junior High School, and that Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy addition that we've made there, or the Crowe Elementary School, or the Crowe Leadership Academy, I should say, that addition that we made there, those came in early, early on. We were prepared right out of the gates. If you remember, we did a lot of that planning prior to the bond passing, so it allowed us to take advantage of good pricing and get a really good early jump on this program. But then, right after that, in March of 2020, the pandemic started. And so, like I mentioned earlier, we didn't really stop down, we just kept going. A lot of people did, and so we enjoyed taking advantage of that labor that was, you know, people that were looking for work, suppliers who were looking to get rid of materials that were stacking up, and so it helped us a great deal. So as you can see further there, we, our playgrounds, our Phase 1 playgrounds came in extremely low and under budget, so that was a great thing. Our Food and Nutrition Service Center, this building that you're in today, came in very well. We enjoyed good pricing on those. And then it extended, you know, into the Webb, Thornton, and Berry projects, you know? Those were in Phase 1, but they were in the latter part of Phase 1, because we needed a year or so to begin the design process and get ready for bidding and construction. And so, if I can, let's go to the next slide. Then we, at this point is where we started to see some impact to construction. We started seeing prices go up, and in fact, we bid projects like Short, and Duff, and South Davis Elementary's, all of which came in 30 and 40% higher than what we expected, higher than our estimates, initial estimates were. So at that point, I and the team made a decision to stop down. It just didn't make sense to accept those bids and be that far over budget without coming back to you all for some discussion and determination as to how we would go forward. And so at this point, you know, we've taken the Phase 2 and the Phase 3 project scopes, all of those projects and those packages, we've assigned those to architects. They're fully in design. Most of those are designed completely at this point, or nearing completion, and so they're ready to go out on the street and be bid. But again, this kind of leads us to the discussion we're having tonight, as to how do we want to go forward to best stay within our budget, and still make, still have as great an impact as we can on all the projects. Next slide, please. This slide just kind of completes the timeline, it just gives you an idea of, we're prepared to recommend architects for Phase 4, but that would come later, a few months from now. All the projects are planned, but we've not started any design. The same thing for Phase 5, that would be a year from now. And so again, we've not started any designs on those, but we do have those planned and ready to go. Next slide, please. And so our recommendation, the Stash recommendation is very simple, really. It's this, is we should continue to continue the work that we started. There are projects that are near completion or have been completed, and we have some that are still quite a ways, there's still quite a ways to go, but we have a project like Webb Elementary School, where we're just a few short months away. We shouldn't stop those, we should continue forward with those. But then further, we would look and say, those projects that have bid, but are in the very beginning, a project like Thornton and Berry, there's no sense in stopping those down either, we should continue forward with those. And so, but we do need to look at all of the other projects, and identify how we're going to reprioritize those, so that we can make the best decisions going forward. And there's a couple of steps there that you can see that we've tried to identify as to how we would attack that. And quite honestly, what we know we feel like should be done is to continue those projects that have critical needs, and I'll give you the examples of those. Example of that would be the replacement for Carter Junior High School, right? We know that that needs to move forward as part of that East Arlington Plan, to move that campus closer to those students, right? And resolve that issue. Then you have the Arlington High School Fine Arts and Dual Language Edition that we have that provides a place for the students that are currently going now to Gun Junior High School, that came from Corian Jones, they need a place to matriculate through to. And so that addition solves that piece, but it also, that addition also resolves some comprehensive classroom needs also, because it's not just about fine arts and dual language, but also about adding regular classes for English, and math, and history, and science. And then we have simple projects like, and they seem simple, but they're critical to us, and the infrastructural needs part of this. And one of those is a program, or a school like Anderson Elementary, where we have a geothermal HVAC system, and the wells that we use to, as heat sinks for that system have heated up over the, in other words, they've just reached the end of their useful life. And so I can't use the ground anymore to heat and cool the building. I have to transition that campus to a more traditional HVAC system, which means a complete renovation of that system. And so, and if I don't do that, or we don't do that, then I lose the ability to heat and cool the building for the students, and you essentially have to take the school offline. So that was planned in this bond as well. So that's a good example of a critical infrastructural need, but we have others as well, you know, just from the standpoint of chiller replacements, and restroom replacements, critical plumbing systems, and that sort of thing at a number of campuses. So with that, we can go to our next slide. This just kind of takes down and shows you what I just quantified in that one slide. These projects here are the projects that we have under construction that I would suggest we just move forward with. And we don't stop down. Stopping down here would just mean added cost and delays. And we have, we have control of our pricing here and it's good pricing. So let's don't, let's don't interrupt that. That's really my recommendation. Next slide. And then these are those projects where we have critical program needs. And you see again, projects like the Anderson Elementary School, Arlington High School. I didn't mention Bailey earlier, but Bailey addresses a need where we have a number, as many as eight to nine classrooms out in portable buildings. And we've, and that's probably the, well, it's one of the few campuses we have left where we have that many classrooms outside. And we all know that it's been that way for quite some time at Bailey. It's a very compact site and we're trying to bring those kids back, pardon me, bring those kids back into the classroom and where it's safest and where they're not having to travel from period to period, right? But then you see other projects in there like the Carter, the replacement for Carter. We've got our, the three stadium projects there, the addition to Dan Diaperd. And then of course, our playgrounds, the last phases of the playgrounds projects. The good news there is we bought the playground equipment and I even bought the concrete for the second phase. I only have to buy the concrete for the third. So that was one of those really key projects that the community really centered on is impacting so many of our elementary school students. So we recommend we move forward with that. And then finally, and I'll touch on, I've got the Security and Transportation Center there. That's only Phase One of the transition to a newer facility at the Service Center. And if you remember, we cut out the second phase of that during this bond program to bring our numbers down to where they were more palatable. But that particular project addresses a critical need to provide training space and I hate saying it, but restrooms for our, for our staff that supports our buses, our transportation and our security across the district. And so more than anything else at the Service Center, that's, that is the absolute most critical need we have. So next slide. Oh, and this is my question slide, I'm sorry. We abbreviated it, so pardon me, I was prepared to go on. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just a couple of comments before, if that's okay, President Fowler. And so again, we bring this forward because we are dealing with the variability of cost. This is again, the beginning of the story. But having clarity in these critical projects would be very helpful for us so that we can continue the momentum and gain those values. You get often reports and presentations, CBOC and others, on how we're doing with our bonds. So that'll obviously continue. But I just want to take a moment to thank Mr. Horn and his team, Mike Parkos and others. Because this, while this seems like a, you know, pretty simple way to get here, it is actually very complicated in prioritization and cost and figuring all those dollars amount, things like that. So Kelly, thank you for your work and.
My pleasure.
Thank you, President Fowler.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have any trustees with comments or questions? Dr. Raj.
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you, Mr. Horn, for the information. And I know we've seen a lot of data with numbers. I'd like to go back a couple of slides to the overall recommendation slide. One more. Yes, that one. So under 3A for critical program needs, it's recommended the project scope be maintained and the budget be increased. What does that look like? Is that just a blank check for whatever it's going to turn out to be? Do you have an estimated, I mean, I know it's crystal ball and crazy market. I'm assuming for those critical projects, give or take, we're probably at about a 30% increase? Would that be inaccurate or can you shed some light on that?
No, that would be a good starting point. I would say our approach, number one, Mr. Parkos and I are looking to take each of these projects and we're still driving to that original budget. That's still our goal. We're just prepared that we may come in higher. So that's the way we're approaching it. And so we're going to do our very best to keep the original scope and drive that as hard as we can to the original budget, estimated budget that we had in the bond program. We do anticipate though, that there could be some increases in cost. No matter where we land though, that scope would, just like every other project would be brought to you, that scope and that budget or that particular cost for the project was brought to you for your approval. And at any point in time, you always hold the ability to ask us to revise that or to bring that down, to, or to adjust the scope. That's just, that's the way we approach each and every project. And so we wouldn't change that. We're just preparing you all to say that there's a good chance that the budget may be an increase over what we originally planned.
Sure. And I appreciate the lead in, the intro slides that you had. You know, it's not the first time that I've seen that. You know, our CBOC presented at our last meeting just last week. And I asked them that question, if that, if they had talked about that. I said, oh yeah, we're very cognizant and really looking at that. So I know they're going to have input into this process, at least from a review standpoint. This is, this is a tough one. I mean, it's, it's what the voters approved. And these were promises that we made to the public. Nobody saw COVID, nobody saw inflation and supply chain, et cetera, et cetera. So I think what you've laid out is very good. I know there's been a ton of discussion and a ton of planning that has gone into this. This wasn't a just throw the dart at the dartboard and see what sticks. So I feel very confident in your ability to continue to manage that. Well, project management on steroids is what this is. So I'm prepared to make a motion to approve these recommendations as stated by administration, but I'll hold in case there's other individuals wanting to discuss.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Do we have any other members? Ms. McMorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Can you go back to the slide that shows all of the projects with critical program needs? I think it was either your last slide?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I really do appreciate you spelling that out for transparency. And these are kind of, in my eyes, a really good place to start to spell that out because these I look at as our non-negotiables. These are our critical needs and I, you know, it gives me a lot of relief to see them, you know, laid out like that. I just want to say thank you to all the work that you and staff have put into this. Purchasing that playground equipment all at once in bulk was a genius idea. I hope, and I'm sure you guys are doing this, but I hope staff will continue to find avenues to make those moves to where we can curb any future, you know. I know you guys are probably already doing this, but Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, we joked that we need to find out where you're housing all of this playground equipment because it's going to be the most epic playground ever to have all of this equipment. I don't know where you're keeping it, but if you let me know, that would be a good thing.
I'll have to tell you secretly, because if anybody else knew that, we might not have it so long, so yes.
And I'm just joking, just joking. But that was a key move and I appreciate you having that line of thought because now we do have to think ahead for reasons like that. And the ADA accessibility on those playgrounds, to me, gives rationale to have that as a critical need. And it's for reasons like that, you guys have these listed as critical needs. These are our non-negotiables. So thank you for listing those very specifically. I think that that's a really good place to start as we start, you know, facing the tougher decisions and really getting down to the nitty gritty. And that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mrs. McMorrow. Mr. Horn, thank you for your insights, for your forward thinking, for protecting the district and looking out for the district and the best use of the bond money. We appreciate you. I know how much work that is, but please know you and your team are appreciated. And we thank you for all you're doing to, again, serve the district and the best use of the bond money.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So with that, do I have a motion?
Yes, I will make that motion. I have one more question on those that will likely require some budget reduction and scope adjustments. Timeline wise, we're likely looking at the fall where you'll have enough time to kind of vet through some of that? Or is that too late, too soon? What are we looking at there?
We're, we've already actively begun to do that, just to build this for you, just to give you an idea of what we could do. So we've kind of have contingency plans in place, Plan A, Plan B, what if? So we've already begun to do that and it's not too soon. We need to be aggressive and I would like to thank you all. To do this this evening helps us a great deal to thwart, you know, further cost increases. And so we will aggressively go after these projects and make sure that we work with our architects, our engineers and staff to try to make sure that we keep as much scope as we can in the project. But at the same time, if we're going to have to make some adjustments, we can do that on the fly. We feel good about it. And we've, we've lost, I'll be honest with you, we've lost three or four months here just trying to, you know, kind of regroup. But it's not something that, you know, we can't really work hard to try to regain and we'll do everything we can to make sure that happens.
Very good. Thank you very much. With that said, I move to approve the administration's recommendations for the bond adjustments as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. So we have a motion by Dr. Raj and a second by Mrs. May. Please vote. Thank you, the motion carries.
Thank you for.
And all in the approval. And Mr. Horn?
Yes, ma'am.
When I was on a little jaunt this weekend over to Granbury, I saw this and thought of you, your very own saw pen that no one else can have but you. It was either this or a hammer, so I went with the saw.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Horn.
There's the labor.
There you go.
Save money.
All right. We will now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval on one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler. I'd like Item C from the consent agenda to be pulled for further discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda with Item C being withdrawn?
Motion.
A motion by Ms. McMorrow. Do I have a second? A second by Dr. Raj. Please vote. And motion carries, thank you. We now move to discussion item A. Dr. Cavassos? No? Wait.
Item C.
Oh. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. I do have some concerns about this item that I think warrants further discussion. And I do want to thank Dr. Wertz for his presentation last week. I think we're all in agreement that coaching and building capacity in our internal coaching department as well as helping our teachers get up to the standard we need them to, especially in those critical, the best practice areas, those four key best practice areas that we know do, yield changes in student outcomes for the better. That was an excellent presentation. However, looking at the contract, I think I was taken back a little on the differences in the pricing versus the traditional pricing that we've had from this one particular vendor. And I'd like to be able to ask some questions about it, if I may.
And looks like Dr. Wertz will be joining us. Thank you, Dr. Wertz.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. So my main concern is, is, you know, as you know, our previous contract had a flat fee per day for the services and also a flat $500 for expenses per day, per coach or per facilitator from E2L. I was taken aback when I looked and noticed that the total per day fee for this contract is $700 more for a total of $300 per day. And if you look at, you know, the fact that teachers are there and available to be coached six hours a day at our elementary schools, you divide that out, that's $500 an hour for their services. And last time I engaged a Harvard educated attorney, that was about the rate for our, kind of our top tier attorneys in the district. So I was a little concerned about the cost and whether we're getting really the best value for the money. Have we, the other issue is, in the past, we've used Engage to Learn because they helped us develop the Active Learning Cycle, our instructional model. And so their services were integral for providing professional development for that particular instructional model and was highly specific to us, highly tailored. This, we're doing kind of the, we're help facilitating our coaches and our teachers in those four best practice areas in primary, primarily reading and math, which is, you know, what we had also engaged them to do in the previous contract. That was $700 less. And this is more gen, I don't want to say generic, it's very important and very needed, but it's not the highly specific Active Learning Cycle coaching and professional development that we're getting from them before. So why the big increase in cost?
So quick clarifier, the coaching that Engage to Learn provided us when we started with Active Learning Cycle wasn't about Active Learning Cycle. They worked with us to facilitate the design of Active Learning Cycle, but Active Learning Cycle is simply the sequence at which a teacher implements the 12 best practices. And the coaching they've always provided have been around the best practices, not about Active Learning Cycle itself. Because when you do the best practices, it actually results in the cycle. If you do them in a specific order, following the behaviors are outlined within the rubric. When it comes down to the increase, it's, our scope of services are different this year than last year. They are adopting or embedding our Arlington ISD coaching cycle, which includes observation and feedback, which is not typically part of the just simple e-gro model. They usually have a coaching touchpoint conversation. And it also to assist us in developing capacity of our team across the district. Because if we keep in mind, it's been kind of a rough three years, which everybody knows. We have coaches in the system who have not really done a lot of coaching. Well, for two years, they were at home and one year, they, last year, they spent a lot of time in the classroom subbing. So we have to revamp that whole process. And so what they have been, what they are going to do for us and help us do is while they coach, we are also allowing the other coaches to observe and follow them in their coaching practice. And then they do debrief with that coach and with the principal to help solidify and kind of get that group kind of up and going. So the scope of services is a little bit different this year with the idea that we're, we're trying to like offboard, if that's a way of putting it. So it's a different set of, I guess, specs this year than it was in prior years.
But still, the fact remains that it's one, it's now $3,000 per, you know, we'll give them credit that even though the school day lasts six hours, there's planning and prep. So we'll say eight dollars, I mean, eight hours. And so whether it was Active Learning Cycle or this, it's still an eight hours at that billable rate, which has now gone up considerably.
Yeah, we're charged by the day. The scope of services they're providing during that day is different and the quality of coaches that they're assigning to us changes too. Because they're all academy coached coaches, academy trained coaches, because we're trying to gear ours up. So it's, like I said, the scope of services is a little bit different, so the rates are different.
Okay. But, you know, I'm just, you know, the back of the number figures $3,000. Okay. But, you know, I'm just, you know, the back of the number figures, $3,000 a day, that's the equivalent of eight teachers' salaries per day, eight to 10, depending on the years of experience. But, I mean, the point is, we, you know, we need to grow capacity quickly. I'm a consultant, so I understand you're going to pay higher to bring a consultant and help you grow. What have we done to compare that rate versus other vendors that provide top-tier coaching services and consulting to other districts?
So that's a good question. The reason why it's challenging to always just make that comparison is because in our field, coaching services are not standardized, simply like, the best way I can describe it is if you were to go work with a life coach, for example, which is a very generic kind of idea, there's a typical rate per hour that people pay. When we do RFPs or when we request services, they're based on specs. And so depending on the specs of each system and what they charge for the scope of their services, that's how you kind of land on a number. And so it's difficult for me to make that comparison unless I was, I pulled specs from all the districts and tried to understand, are you asking for the same scope of services that we're asking? But to facilitate that process, that's why we go through, that's why people go through the process every few years to see if there are vendors who provide similar specs. So it just takes time.
Right, but there's, you know, a pretty good universe of vendors that like CT3, for instance, that also provides very similar services for coaching. And they, you know, we're talking about a professional consultant who bills an, either a day rate or you can, you know, work out to equivalent hourly rate so that we can see what the industry norms are. I, I would posit that it's not impossible to figure out what the industry norms are for this type of consulting services.
I don't know that it's impossible. I would say just in terms of specificity, what Engage does for us isn't just typical coaching services. Like, they do a lot more for us than coaching. So it's, when, when we go out for bid, for example, for, for coaching services, our specs are a lot more in-depth than what we would ask for just a teacher getting coached by, by a coacher, a coach, a teacher, a coachee being coached by a coach. So, yeah, they're, they're, there's probably industry standards around a coach, but I can't necessarily make a comparison if I don't know what their scope of work is, because they're, our Engage just doesn't come and just coach. That's not their role with us. There's, they consult, they actually help us with our, our documents, all of our look-fores that we're creating in the classroom, the way we're tracking data, they are, they're designing that for us. Like, there's a whole scope of work they do with us as a contracted employee, a contracted service. It's not just coaching, but it's all built into that contract.
Right. But then, you know, still, you're still talking about one consultant. It's priced, you know, $3,000 for one consultant per day. So that should be very easy, no matter what they're doing, you know, the number of hours is set. And if, you know, I can understand where it might be differentiated if they were doing executive coaching versus your run-of-the-mill standard professional development for a teacher. But, you know, still, when you divide out the amount and look that it's the equivalent of a top-tier attorney at the top rates that attorneys charge in the United States, that, that does give me a little bit of pause. And the fact that we don't have that comparison to validate, yes, this may look out of the ordinary, but it is within industry norms.
Well, that-
And that we are getting a good value, the best value for the district, given the kind of specialized services they're providing us.
Yeah, the typical process we go through is going for bid. And when people respond to the bid, we compare what they're charging for the services that are in our specs, and that's how we come to decisions.
Did you get a number, when was the last time you bid this contract?
We're required for Edgar to bid out once every three years. That's the typical process. You bid out every three years, so this is the last year on the bid, and we would have to go out for bid another year if we were to use the vendor again.
Okay. But this, again, the scope is different than when we bid them coming into the pandemic, or?
The only, that's the point I was, that's what I was getting to at the beginning, is it's, their work is very similar. It's the scope of work is the volume of teachers is what's changed. We, when we went to a strategy where we had all math and literacy instructors providing coaching for them, we did that with a strategy, knowing that with ESAR, you didn't want to hire all the staff internally because there would be a cliff that you'd fall off in three years. So the idea is how do you leverage an outside vendor to help support that service? So while you build capacity, knowing that at the end of three years, you'll have a lot of skill sets already built within the teachers and you wouldn't need that volume of coaches to sustain the work. And so the volume of work is really where the, I mean, the difference, the type of work isn't different. The, the work that's different is the volume of people that we're addressing. When we talk about teachers, we have 2,600 literacy and math teachers across the system. And to try to approach that volume of coaching in a short span of time, it requires an army that we just don't have. And that's where their scope changed. Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm all for, I'm a consultant, so I know the value that we bring to the table. And I'm a consultant in private equity and I wish I was getting, evidently I'm in the wrong line of work. Is there a way I can get a job at E2O?
I mean, you can apply.
Let's, 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 I'm kidding aside, let's switch gears and let's talk about, what have we done to try to negotiate that rate down? Because it does seem a little hot.
So they have actually, when I, when we get our contract with them every year, we look at, they initially give us the initial amount. This year, we asked them to keep it down to a, a certain number. And we also looked at the services that we're providing. We cut out services we didn't want. So there's, it's not, the way we've done it this year, we're actually, every year, we don't just get a contract from them and we just adopt it. There is a give and take along the way to make sure that we're within a budget that we're looking for and that the services they're rendering for us actually meet our objective, even if we're having to cut certain things. So for example, in the past, we did executive coaching with principals and we actually coached coaches. We don't do that anymore. We internally handle that completely, so that was taken out of the contract. We could have continued that and, and eased the burden of other parts of the system. But like, as you well know, our goal is to eventually onboard our own people so that we don't have a vendor doing the work for us.
Yeah, no, I agree. And, you know, and it is an adroit strategy to build capacity in the system and to elevate our teaching staff to the level we need to, to really affect student outcomes. So what, you know, given that we've had this vendor for, like, for five years or six years?
I think since 2017, yeah.
17, okay. So we've had plenty of opportunity to look at classrooms where an Engage to Learn coach has gone in and done the cycles and compare the end-of-the-year stars or screener data to coaches that haven't had that opportunity yet. And where are we drawing correlations between the coaching and proving its effectiveness so that we do know that we're seeing an ROI on this?
So that's a very good question. I'll, I have two parts to the answer. The first one is when we attempted to do that earlier, when we were implementing Active Learning Cycle in the classrooms, even though the coaching was centered specifically around best practices, the teacher's own decision in terms of how often they implemented the best practice within the context of a cycle, we left a lot to their own volition. So some, seeing some teachers might do one every two weeks, some might do a cycle every six weeks. And the reason we gave them that flexibility is because they're adults, learning a new skill, and we didn't want to infuse undue pressure on people when we knew that they were trying to learn a new process. Because of that, it created, it creates very dirty data when you're trying to analyze like an input and an output. So this last year, it was much cleaner. We knew exactly how many cycles there were going to be. We knew exactly what they were being coached on and what the outcomes were going to be. And so we actually ran an initial analysis where we looked to see, is there a relationship between the, the, the teachers who badged in these four areas, who earned a Level 3 badge, which is a proficient badge, and the outcomes they're experiencing with kids? Prelimarily, we saw positive trends. The more, if you started with a Level 1 badge, you really didn't see anything. But that would be normal, because that's only two growth indicators and you're just barely learning. But by the time they got to Level 3 badges, you started to see growth. The reason why you don't see me standing here in front of you reporting that data is because it got so clunky when we had to basically push everything on pause. So if you were to look at our data for, in terms of like how fast people were acquiring badges, it literally looks like there's growth, 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 and then there's this big flat line and then growth again. So it's like you have these two months where people just stopped, and it's because we were all in classrooms doing sub, sub work. So I couldn't come to you and give you inclusive data, but like when I was meeting with Dr. Lopez, our discussion was, even though we can see that there potentially could be a relationship, it actually generates more questions like, so what, what's the experience level of these teachers and what's the relationship? Like, we, there's, it answers, it actually generates more questions. This next school year, assuming everything goes as planned, you will, you will have five consecutive cycles. We'll know exactly all, who's being coached, who's not being coached, when it stopped, when it started. And we're tracking that data the entire time so that we can come and answer that question for you, because it's important for us too, not just for a return on investment, but also to make sure that we're employing strategies that we know actually impacts student outcomes. Because it's like I mentioned the last time, as much as we love what we do, there's no emotional investment in it. If it doesn't work, you have to make, you have to be objective to the data. So that system's in place for next school year. It was in place this last one. Honestly, if I'm being totally transparent, the, the pandemic, the way it kind of just hit us all over the place last year and the absenteeism of, it just made it very difficult to say cleanly, there, this is a A plus B equals C kind of scenario.
Well, I'm, I'm glad you brought up Dr. Lopez, because we are blessed at having one of the best data scientists in a district. And I'm sure she's pretty capable of, of looking at the past data and kind of ferreting out what can be discerned from that data to, to draw those correlations. Because it's kind of hard with a vendor that we've spent five years and tens of millions of dollars on and not having that correlation yet, to know that we are getting a return on investment.
We, we actually started that conversation be, with Dr. Barlow when he was here. He ran an analysis, but even his conclusion was the same as the one that I was giving you, which is the dirty, the data's dirty. And that's the only reason I, I couldn't do it with confidence.
That's unfortunate. So let's, let's talk about specifically the $500 a day, which is a drag, you know, adds to the lower-
Mr. Will Banks, if I could interrupt for one second, Dr. Cavasos would like to-
Before we leave that topic, I think it's important to add a little bit of context. Because in that relationship of the five cycles, and this is not exactly precise, but you can help me, Dr. Wertz, this is a blended model. So the contracting coaching is not the only coaching happening. We're going to have our internal coaches do the same cycle, the same standard, the same documentation. So to, to the context of the question of, hey, once you do all this, does it make a difference? It's really a challenge for us, not only for the contractor, but for our internal coaches as well. And I just want to make sure we capture that, because this is one of those models where, is it 70% Steven, Dr. Wertz? Or 60 will be us?
Yeah, so right now, we're, we're kind of slated for 70% of coaching being done internally and 30% being done with E2L.
So the, I, I just, I want to add a context that the same standard of, of, does this make a difference? I'm just simplifying the language here, is really going to be across the board, because this is only a slice of the individuals providing the coaching. The rest is going to be done internally. So it gives us that opportunity, by the way, because we've set that standard for, for all the coaching.
Well, hopefully that's designed carefully and I know if Natalie's involved and Dr. Lopez has evolved that it, it will be. And that we, that can be shared with the board. Because it's been very frustrating that we've spent a lot of money on, on this, and yet we have no idea what the impact is. And hopefully going forward, we can correct that and, and get good data so that we know that we're spending our taxpayer dollars wisely.
But, Mr. Will Banks, just to your point, because it's a good point, that's true, and, and this is Dr. Lopez's challenge as well with Dr. Wertz and Dr. Brown. Yes, there's expenditures on this contract, but there's also expenditures with internal staff. There's expenditures that we do with hiring individuals and things like that. And, and so I, I want to make sure that this is a comprehensive discussion of the effect of our strategies. And many of our strategies are internal. They're not external.
Right.
And so that's our big challenge. Dr. Lopez has tools that will help us answer some of those questions. But at the same standard that we have for external, we have also for internal to see, making sure we have the right strategies and individuals providing the service.
Let's switch, thank you, Dr. Cavasos. Let's switch gears to, back to the jump in fees and, and the ability to, to kind of negotiate to get the best value for the district. Since we have five years of invoices, detailed invoices, with the exact names of the coaches, and we know from E2L exactly where those coaches live, have we done an analysis on if a flat rate is really the best value? Or would it make sense to go to actual expenses or capped expenses on the travel expense?
So each year, we get assigned a new set of coaches. They're not always the same, because they're, they're an organization that hires and has turnover the way that we do. Coaches that we receive from them come all across the state of Texas and multiple states. So we have never looked at it per item, because that's not the way that we are billed from them when it comes to their coaches. It's always a flat rate. The reason they've always done that is because of the, the, there's a couple of things. It increases costs, not only of your administrative costs, but also there is a lot of unpredictability when it comes to travel. And so we, we, I have asked specifically around the travel question. And this one that you're posing, and we posed at the very beginning of our relationship, we are currently of all of their clients, the lowest rate of their travel. We, they charge us the lowest of all. But they do that in a way to help save costs over time, because when you have people coming from different places, as you said, their rates change. We have not pulled every single coach and looked at where they travel and what their costs of their plane tickets are, because we don't, that's not how we're billed from them. They bill us a flat rate. That's how they send us.
Well, so I spent about an hour and a half last night, and I took the last invoice that you guys had provided to me. And there were 43 consultants. Out of those 43 consultants, two-thirds of them were from right here in DFW. So there was no plane ticket, there was no car rental, there were not many meals. But even if you give them a generous 70 cents per mile, you know, because the gas has gone up, and $25 a day for meals, you're looking at worst case, the best case, $30 a day in expenses. And worst case, for those two-thirds that live in the metroplex, $90 a day. And yet we're having to pay $50, $500 a day for every day they're here, when we know their cost is significantly lower. If you expand out, out of the 43, 93% were from the state of Texas. Places like Austin and Corpus Christi where Engage to Learn is located. But some were located in Jacksonville, which there's no airport, so that person would be driving in. And again, it would just be hotel, no plane fare and mileage. It still would be significantly lower than the $500 a day expenses. And in fact, worst case, I mean, we had three that actually traveled out of state from Detroit, North Carolina, and Oklahoma on that one particular invoice. And-
Mr. Will Banks, if I could interrupt for one moment to see if maybe if I summarize the things that Dr. Wertz has said, maybe that'll bring some clarification?
I'm almost done. Let me finish up. So with a quick analysis, you know, it looks like we have a lot to go back to them and say, look, this $500 a day, we're not getting the bang for the buck, especially for those two, two-thirds of the consultants that live right here within a 30-minute drive of our district.
That's fair, and we can certainly go back and have that conversation with them.
And, but that's my point, is I think, you know, given the fact that this does look outrageous, we haven't compared it to other vendors. I don't know that I can support it right now until we do that kind of analysis, because we don't have the ROI. We haven't proven its efficacy. We know it's a good best practice, and I want to support it. But I think we need to do, and I know we sent out the bid before, but this vendor's been with us for a very long time. And I think we need to do our due diligence to make sure that we're getting the very best value- we can for this strategy so that we can maximize our return on investment. And so until we kind of do those analyses, go back and renegotiate this cost and try to just, I, I am just having a hard time justifying an increase of $700 a day for essentially something that's simpler in scope in my mind than what we were doing before with them when it was only $1,800 a day for the consulting. So, so with that, I, I'm, I'm just not ready to approve this.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Dr. Wertz, if I could ask, so the, the scope of the services have increased?
That's correct.
Right? So they're doing more for us, which you would assume the price would go up if they're doing more services for us. And you mentioned that there's a higher level of coaching that's going on.
That's correct.
And they will be coaching more teachers than they have been in the past?
Well, they have been coaching more teachers in the past. We've asked, actually in this contract, we've asked them to, we've narrowed down their focus around because we're, we're trying to absorb more. But yes, the, the contract that we've had since ESAR started has been all literacy and math, which is much more than we've ever done at any time before.
All right, thank you. And we're going to be using ESAR money while we're building capacity within our district. So we're using the ESAR money to pay for them. But they're coming in and not only working with teachers, but training teachers so that in the future, we can use our own coaches and might not need to use them.
That's correct.
Okay. And then you, you mentioned that you've already taken certain items out of the contract to lessen it.
That's correct.
Okay. And then the data will be more defined as we go forward? Be able to see more of what the effects have been and be able to get more information?
Yes, the system was in place, as I mentioned. We have preliminary data that tells us things. It's just I want to feel very confident when I'm ready to report something out. And the system's there, we, we need to be able to implement the strategy with fidelity.
Okay. And as far as the travel, Mr. Will Banks mentioned that some of them were from the, you know, DFW area and surrounding areas. But do we know that the coaches that will be coming in are from this area? Or do we?
That's the thing they're assigned based upon what you're asking to do and what their current staff looks like. I did inquire whether our assignments have been made and they're not finalized. I will inquire about the travel. I'm happy to do that.
Okay, so we could have people that are flying in from all over the country?
They can come, as he mentioned, from as far as North Carolina and Illinois. And they can also come as close as Austin, it really, DFW. It really varies. I would have to ask them, and based upon their assignments, I'm happy to ask them the question again that he brought up.
Okay. And then you mentioned, you know, to me, when you, when you package things together, you usually get a little bit better deal. So didn't you mention that it's kind of a, instead of individual and trying to figure out every single item and every single road trip and every single hotel, that it's kind of lumped in a package deal for? So we get a little bit better rate?
Yes, it's the, it's the model they use with every system they do because generally they find when you itemize people out, you, it ends up costing more. But as I mentioned, I'm happy to go back and negotiate that with them.
All right, thank you, Dr. Wertz. Mrs. Mays?
Thank you, President Fowler. Just a couple of the things that I want to confirm as well. Once again, this current contract would be for one year?
That's correct.
Okay. And if we didn't have these coaches, an option we could have is to pull staff out of schools and classrooms to try to cover that coaching, which would then leave us with an already lesser number of teachers or administrators in a school?
Yes, and in essence, without the support, this strategy pretty much comes to a screeching halt. And it's simply because that we don't have the staff to do it on our own. And there has to be an on-ramp to train them to do it. It's almost like I could have a person, but I can't just say, go start coaching. I have to teach you to do that, and I need to make sure you're proficient at it so that there's value there. So the support that they provide us allows us to build that on-ramp so that we can use this year to make sure that's in place. Because essentially, if we don't have a partnership with them, there are lots and lots of teachers that will not receive coaching. It's just impossible.
Okay. So to me, I see this also as a necessary way of, once again, closing that gap of lost learning.
That's the goal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, Dr. Wertz, for answering all our questions. Always being great support about that. And also, before tonight, you've answered a lot of my questions about this via email. I share a lot of the same questions and concerns as Mr. Will Banks. You've answered a lot of them already. I understand that ESAR doesn't last forever. We have this gift of some extra funding for a little tiny bit, slice of time, and then it goes away. So I do understand the rationale behind getting some supplements from Engage to Learn and why that is a better move with ESAR than hiring more and more and more in-house coaches. Which it's no secret, I do think that in-house coaches ideally would be able to make more headway and build stronger relationships with our teachers. But we are in the situation we're in, and we do have this gift of ESAR money, so there's that. I also think we have a lot of positive momentum going with what we're looking at for next year. We are taking active learning cycle and we're making it optional for our teachers next year, which to me is huge. Also, the Reading Academy participants, which are kindergarten teachers, our first grade teachers, they, if I understand correctly, will not be partaking in these coaching cycles, at least not for now. So that they can actually have time to complete Reading Academy, which is very burdensome. So with all of that considered, I still want to make sure that this expense, as Mr. Will Banks put, we are getting our return on investment. And I'm not just talking about money. I'm talking about the time and, and the buy-in that we have from our teachers. Is this really worth it? Because at the end of the day, that is going to be the key holder to student outcomes. And that's what my few questions pertain to. So will the elementary campuses that already have three in-house coaches, AISD coaches, be getting E2L coaches? Or is this an example of a campus that wouldn't have that need?
So we're working with the Office of School Leadership to determine where their capacity is. Where there's capacity and proficiency for coaches to take their own caseload, we're going to delegate those caseloads to them. Where there's a situation where a school does, has a coach but needs to be strengthened in terms of their practice because they've been out of practice or haven't been totally trained because of the last three years of situation. There may be an E2L coach that's attached, but then that coach will also have opportunities to follow and shadow and also receive feedback. Primarily, from our initial discussions, we believe that most of the capacity of the elementary can be served with people that are internal. Secondary becomes very challenging. And that's where the majority of our efforts we perceive to be with E2L will be in the secondary world.
And that makes a lot of sense to me. I know that our secondary campuses, only like the ones that I know of anyway, they have one coach. So that makes a lot of sense, especially when we're, we're trying to touch all of our math and literacy teachers. So that makes sense to me. How can we ensure that communication will stay intact between our Arlington ISD coaches, E2L coaches, and then the building administrators? How are we going to streamline that?
So we've worked with E2L, so there's a couple of things. When they're, they're doing coaching and a coach is shadowing them, there's, there'll be debrief sessions between the coach, the principal, and the coach from E2L. And we've also asked E2L's coaches to make regular touchpoints with principals. And then, of course, we'll solicit information and feedback from teachers throughout the year to see how they're experiencing the coaching, if it's meaningful to them, what adjustments need to be made. We can do that as well. So that conversation point in terms of really connecting between the teacher and the principal at the building, we've already established that with E2L.
Okay, great. And that's really something that I hope we're really intentional about because formative feedback is one of our best practices. And we need to, we need to practice that across the board. As Mr. Will Banks mentioned, this is your five of our partnership with E2L. And even though the scope of work is changing, and in my opinion, it's for the better, looking for next year. You know, I know that we can and should measure formatively how this is working. How can we, other than, you know, looking at data and how badges, you know, match up with student, like student performance data, how can we keep our finger on the pulse at the end of this year, this contract, with how, how our teachers and in-house coaches and even building administrators have been impacted? How do we get their formative feedback on how this is going? Either at the end of this year or even before that? How are we going to get, as a district-wide level? How are we going to keep our finger on the pulse at the campus-wide level?
Well, there's like, as you mentioned, the achievement side. To understand how the adults are experiencing it, there's two ways to go about. Of course, soliciting feedback directly from teachers. We meet also with coaches on a regular basis because our, our coaching staff or the, or the staff that I have that works at Professional Learning that manages, coaches meets with them on a monthly basis. We can solicit feedback from them. And then also work with the Office of School Leadership and the executive directors. They meet routinely with their principals and making that a part of their touchpoint with principals regularly to get feedback. The awesome thing that I have in terms of my relationship with Dr. Brown is we collaborate. So she's able to provide feedback that she's receiving from her executive directors about what's working, not working, which allows me to pivot. So I think there are multiple ways we can actually go about that.
Okay. Because if you look at the big picture, five coaching cycles a year, that's not a lot. But that's all the more reason why, expense-wise, this makes me raise eyebrows. I want to make sure that that time is, is well-spent. And I want to make sure our money is being well-spent on the time that we're getting this company to help our teachers. So thank you again for answering all of my questions. I really, really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McMorrow. Mr. Hibbs?
Dr. Wertz, thank you. Thank you for, you've got, you've been asked a lot of good questions. A lot of questions that I know that this board has had. And I, you know, I want to compliment my board members because I, we had this conversation even as we were discussing over the, the planning of the, the meeting tonight. We mentioned briefly enclosed. And something I want to say, it's, it's, it's interesting that this group is called Engaged. Because what I see from all involved here tonight is people are engaged. You're looking at this, you're looking at it as a serious thing. We're talking about approving our budget last week and knowing that we're going to be stretched thin in that I see engagement, I see commitment, I see passion, I see a desire to work for excellence and results. And I see that as a shared thing. I see that as from an administration standpoint, this is what you, Dr. Brown, and so many others are striving for is to go, let's get the best that we can get out of our teachers, out of our administrators, you know, out of ourselves. And, and that's what you do by bringing in individuals that are consultants, as Mr. Will Banks is. He's a consultant. He's brought in to be able to give this 30,000-foot level of thinking that you may have not been able to grasp being here as foot soldiers and trying to work through what everyone has tried to work through during this pandemic. I think it's, it's a magnificent thing. I've been watching board meetings since I've left three years ago, and I see what this board has done. I've seen what the administration has done. We're going to see star results and seeing amazing things taking places on our campuses. And what I see is, I see a commitment. I see a commitment to move and to engage. So I, I, I just say that, that as we look forward here on this particular contract, it's a one-year contract, correct? I think we, we've understood that. It's a one-year contract. But it's also a must-review contract before we could ever come up for reapproval next year because we're in the second, third year, right? I think that's what I picked up that you, you discussed. It's also, though, it's because of the pandemic, it's going to be a real measurement year, providing that we don't have the disruptions that we've had over the past few years because of the pandemic, because of so many other issues, teacher shortages, things as such, that the opportunity is, this gives us a year of normalcy to actually be able to review. And then we'll come back and do that full review. We also have the, the luxury of having ESAR dollars that we can, these are for emergency purposes. And I am all on board with what Ms. McMorrow says. I would love to see our entire district full of our own coaches. Reality sake, as what my colleague here, Ms. Mays, said a minute ago is that if we tried to pull coaches, we're going to be losing teacher spots in classrooms. And we're five weeks from starting school again. And we can't afford to do that because we still don't have all of our classrooms filled. It's my recommendation, knowing that there's a lot of things. And I, and I put my trust in you, Dr. Cavassos, and the powers that be in working this, this contract to really say, hey, our board has taken a long, hard look at this. And, and cost is important to us, to have those conversations. But I don't want to stop the process that we have in place, knowing that if we don't move forward on this, at this point, we halt, I'll halt the entire machine. You know, we either do it or we don't. I, I, I think that it's a fair trade-off with the ESAR dollars that we have in place. And with the commitment that we look at this one year and we see a return, and we have a serious review of being able to say, okay, we've had a full year to review, and it's fair at that time to say, we should have the measurements in place. So with that, I would make a movement that we go ahead and accept the approval of the Engage to Learn contract for this next school year as recommended by the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Do I have a, do I have a second?
A second?
I have a first by Mr. Hibbs, a second by Ms. Mays. Please vote. We have five voting yes and one voting no. The motion carries. Dr. Wertz, I want to thank you so much, you and your team, for bringing all this information to us. I'm a firm believer in coaching. I think it does well for our students and other faculty. It allows our teachers to grow in their teaching methods and their practices, which ultimately, of course, helps our students grow in their knowledge and skills. So thank you so much for bringing us this information, and thank your team so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we move to our discussion item A. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. And so this evening, we bring an update on House Bill III District Improvement Plan monitoring progress and our preliminary scores for our STAR-tested areas. And so get comfortable because this will be a rather lengthy presentation. But Dr. Wertz is back. Switch gears now, Dr. Wertz. And we're going to go through our, our data and how it came back. And I think there's obviously some good news here for the district. I do want to acknowledge the work that's done across the system before that. But also know that we have many challenges. The, the challenges are still with us, and, but, but we have very good signs of, of improvement. So with that, Dr. Wertz.
All right. I'm good, but thank you. So good evening, President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. We're here tonight to give our final annual update for House Bill III and, and District Improvement Plan that follows the calendar that was adopted at the beginning of the year. I, I want to echo what Dr. Cavassos just said and thank all the members of our team, especially the classroom teachers and principals in the buildings who have worked tirelessly to bring growth with our kids. It's been a very challenging year, and I think all of us can unanimously say thank you for their work. say thank you for their work they've done. There's been a big sacrifice on the parts of their their life to make things good for kids. Um the first slide we kind of want to start off in is just six, just to talk about the journey we've kind of been on. Um this year was not, we all came back to school last year thinking we were finally gonna have a normal year, and we didn't. Um we often forget, we had virtual school going on until Christmas time. We had high absentee rates because people were still suffering from the impact of COVID. Um we had teachers that were had to be out. We had central office staff getting deployed to even just fill substitutes. So it was by no means a typical year. Um but we knew that if there was anything that we think would be positive, it would be that our students would have an opportunity to grow in their learning, um because they had been home for two years, and now they're gonna be faced um with working with a teacher who had skill. So just some of the things that we can remind the team that we focused on is, we really focused on math and reading. And the reason we chose to to uh focus on those two areas is because it's our belief that those are really the foundation of really all core content areas. All the other content areas are the application of math and reading skills. We prioritize standards uh to try to help teachers um uh effectively plan for acceleration in their classroom, um keep kids on grade level but fill gaps along the way. Principals and teachers work tirelessly in professional learning communities to really looking at their data to try to drive instruction that met the individual needs of their learners. Uh we leveraged screeners in ways that we um this year that were really uh specific, um monitoring the data, tracking the data. Uh campuses leverage that data, understand what building blocks in math and reading needed to be short up so that kids could be successful in their grade level standards. And then, of course, as you know, we facilitated coaching, and we focused on four of the twelve best practices that we knew were the highest-leveraged best practices that would actually uh create results for kids, including aligning our standards, formative uh assessment and feedback, small group instruction, and then, of course, differentiating for our 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 kids. We also worked to establish a system to implement the House Bill forty-five forty-five uh directive from the state legislature, which really provided small group instruction to kids around standards that they're really struggling around. And then, of course, sheltered instruction, which is a strategy for helping kids uh who are language learners, um make sense of the content that they're learning in their um in their classrooms. And we use this model, this idea, uh that you've heard me talk a lot about, when I use um almost like going to the doctor, you have your input, you you implement it, and then you have an output. And our goal was to really try to monitor the quality of implementation around these practices so that we can produce a result on the end that we were looking for. And there was this constant feedback cycle and adjustment. And I think um if you were to interview teachers, um some of which have stood in front of you this year, they will say that they they were deeply um engaged in the process of trying to find out what their kids need uh needed. So tonight, we have three major objectives that we wanted to share with you today. One is I'll share with you just the progression of outcomes and the preliminary annual results. Um so I've been in front of you all year long, showing you how we were progressing from CA one to CA two to benchmarks. So today, we'll we'll share with you the the actual preliminary annual results. Uh Dr. Lopez will give you um um some information about what these results, how they impact our accountability system here in Texas. And then finally, Dr. Brown will talk specifically around the growth that schools experience, um the impact that's has on school um improvement requirements, and then some of our next steps. So the first thing I'm gonna share with you um is our pre-K E O Y reading. So as a reminder, we use um CLI, and we have um specifically looked in pre-K around rapid letter naming um as one of our indicators. Now, one of the things I just want to remind the board about is, for next school year, we talked specifically um that the team is designing uh what we like, almost like a composite that we want to look for to understand that whether students are actually kindergarten-ready. So I will uh describe what you're gonna see in front of you, and then I'm gonna go through slides. But since all the slides look virtually the same, I won't necessarily speak to all of them. But um this is pre-K four. Our goal is by twenty twenty-six that we would have students on track moving from seventy percent to eighty percent proficiency. So if you were to look at this slide, our baseline year was twenty twenty-one, seventy percent, and our goal by twenty twenty-six was to get to eighty. And if you look across, you'll see our year one goal this year was seventy-three. By the end of this year, we were at eighty-three. So there's a sixteen-point difference between middle of year and end of year. So what we reported out in the it as we started out at at the beginning of the year, we had about thirty-eight percent of our students reaching that target. By middle of the year, it was sixty-seven percent, and now by the end of the year, we have eighty-three percent. As you look at these grids, anything that's highlighted in green represents an achievement of a goal or a target that was articulated and adopted by the board. So um if you were to look at the pre-K four, there were goals adopted for all of different subgroups. And so here in green, you'll see not only the growth that's on the far right-hand side, which is the difference between middle of the year that I reported last time and the end point that we had at the end of this year, but in the column right on the left of it, the solid green represents whether we actually achieved the goal or not. So that's kind of the standard of these, and I'll kind of just go through some of them This is um this is the same slide twice. So there's mathematics. That's an editing error on my part. So in mathematics, our goal was to go from sixty-five to seventy-six by twenty twenty-six, and our year one goal was sixty-six, and our end-of-year landing point was actually eighty-four percent, um which is a seventeen-point increase from the middle-of-year mark. In mathematics, they also have a composite score. Our our goal is to go to from sixty-five to seventy-six by twenty twenty-six. Our baseline year was last year. Our goal this year was to have sixty-six percent, and we landed on eighty-seven. Now I'm going to go over M-class, which, as you know, is the screener that we use for um elementary um grades. And M-class actually breaks down into performance levels, which go from above at, below, or well below benchmark. Our goal was that students would uh reach grade level expectations at or above um from fifty-one to seventy-five by twenty twenty-six. If you look at this uh grid, the N represents the number of students who took the assessment, who landed in that category, and the percent on the side is what percentage of the total population they represent. And if you're a visual person, there's a pie chart for you. But this here um actually describes what happened. So um in the columns at the top, what you're noticing, if it's in green, is growth that occurred um between beginning, middle of year and end of year. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see bar graphs, which just represent those tables in a in a bar graph form. So you'll see um the level of growth that happened um in terms of numbers of students. This is first grade. You'll see the growth between middle of year and end of year in green and any declining in red. The next one I want to share with you is IStation, and we use IStation as another screener, but it's more for the intermediate and junior high students. Seventh-grade students are required if they uh are required if they didn't pass uh sixth grade reading. They're required by law to participate in screener, but we have them all um do the screener. So here we have our I- our IStation screeners. And what we did is we separated them by performance level. So we have performance level one, two, three, four, and five. Five is where you're wanting to go. And we separated them by grade level, so you can see what percentage of students in each grade level landed in each of those different categories. And this is for the assessment window between April twenty-fifth and May twentieth. So um this is the end-of-year overall by grade. So if you'll look at this one, you'll see where they landed. And then over here, you'll notice um the difference between middle of year and end of year. So in this category, you can see that the performance seemed to be very similar between middle and end. Math was an area that we really struggled with um in STAR and even over the course of screener. So um I'm about to share with you what our math inventory, which is our screener um four K through six, how it looked. There are also proficiency levels here, advanced, proficient, basic, and below basic. And you can see the percentages of students that land in each category when we did our end-of-year screening by grade level. And if you're um, so you can see, for example, in fourth grade, I'll just use that as an example, we have thirty percent of the fourth graders that landed in advanced, twenty-three per proficient. And then, as you can see, there's still work to be done when you have forty-seven percent at still basic or below basic. And the important thing about a screener is it doesn't function like the summative assessment. It's designed to see where are kids performing on these building blocks over time. Um and as a reminder, we're moving to a different math screener next year, um because the way this screener, as I've shared before, is developed, you earn a quantile score, which basically moves you closer and closer towards algebra readiness. And the higher your quantile score, the closer you are to the algebra readiness. But it's harder for teachers to interpret and break down that score into skills, uh or at least at the district level, it's a it's a challenge. So we're gonna move to a different screener next year. This actual slide shows you the difference in uh results between end-of-year and middle-of-year. So lots of growth. And now I'm gonna share with you STAR domain results. Now, Dr. Lopez will go over the accountability system. Domain one is um where we set all of our goals, which is, did, what is the passing? Did you pass the assessment or reach the the approaches level or didn't you? That's pretty much where it is. So we have overall reading goals and math goals, and then we set what we're what we um um specific uh goals by subgroup within different uh grade level bands. And so I'll share with you some of those outcomes. Um I'll articulate, as I did before, the way to read the grid and then you or the table, and then you can um go from there. But for this one, for reading, our goal initially was, how do we, when we were setting our targets, we said, what were we pre-pandemic, and how long will it take us based on loss to get back there? So some of our targets, we set aggressively, like three years, and some of them, we knew were gonna take us five years to get there. Um our our goal um for this one was to go from sixty-one percent, which is our baseline, from twenty twenty-one to seventy-nine percent by twenty twenty-six. Here, you can see our goal for this year was sixty-four. That was the target that the board adopted back in the fall. And our outcome for overall reading was seventy-two percent. So we exceeded our our goal pretty significantly. Um and just like with the other slides, if the um if the the space is filled in with green, it means it was a target that the board adopted that was achieved. This is overall math achievement. Um our goal is to go from fifty-one to seventy-nine. Our target this year was fifty-eight percent, and we reached sixty-five. I did want to note some populations that have typically struggled, that performed very well, specifically in mathematics. I'll call out special education, current special education students. Our target with special education students was thirty-three percent passing. Um their baseline was all the way down to twenty-five, and forty-two percent of them passed this year. So there was a a lot of success with special education students. This is a review of domain one by subject. So if you were to look on the far left-hand side, you're gonna see ELAR, mathematics, science, and social studies. And you're gonna see what the breakdown was, is the percentage of students that met approaches, meets, and masters. And then what the domain one, meaning the total passing amount, was in that fourth column. And you'll be able to compare nineteen, twenty-one, and twenty-two. When you look at the green, um it's on the green side, that just articulating the difference between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. And as you can see, the percentage of students that were me um reaching um the approaches um or reaching the domain scores actually changed um by seven points, for example, between twenty-one and twenty-two. It's so it's green, it's in the positive. This is a breakdown of reading, language arts, um by grade level, between third grade. When you get to high school, it's English one and two. And you can see the difference between approaches, meets, and masters, and then domain one in twenty twenty-one and domain one in twenty twenty-two. And you can see in the areas um three through eighth, there's lots of growth. Uh we had a lot of success in English one and two before, and this year, it it kind of slipped back. Um so you that's why you don't see those green. We did not reach our targets. Uh we did not show the growth that we saw in the other areas, specifically in the high school. Um I will say, and we've talked about this, English one and two, even last year, kind of surprised us because there was an anomaly across the state where everyone was performing much higher in English one than we typically were used to, and now we're seeing it kind of go back to the way that it was. Now, one of the things that um Dr. Brown will talk about and Dr. Lopez is that the focus really was growth. We knew that there were kids that might not actually cross the finish line when it came to passing STAR, but can you inch them closer? Because good teachers move kids. You don't always get kids across the finish line, but they they make at least a year or more worth of growth under your guidance as a teacher. So that domain is two A um in our syst- in the accountability system, which Dr. Lopez will talk about. This is to show you the the difference in growth that occurred um between two A in two thousand nineteen and the two A score for twenty twenty-two. So I'll just use fourth grade as an example. In fourth grade reading, the the um the domain two A score was fifty-eight. This year, um there was a twenty-point increase, and it was seventy-eight. So lots and lots and lots of growth. I think sixth grade is a really interesting example, twenty-five-point difference in the way that their growth was occurring um before. This is mathematics. Growth everywhere, including algebra. And then the two A score. When it comes to growth, we're still have work to do. And it comes to eighth-grade math, which was one of our areas, if you'll remember last year. Science. For high school, for those that might be watching, that's biology. And then social studies. And for high school, that's US history. So what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Lopez, and she's gonna talk specifically about the accountability and what implications this has on that system.
President Fowler, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you for your time and um for letting me present the projections. I'm gonna go ahead and get started, um give you an overview, uh very brief overview, on accountability system. I know that we've gone to a very granular level at times. Uh so we'll keep this pretty high-level so that when I do show you the projection for the district, um some of that's refreshed in your mind, so. All right. So for the A to F accountability system, there are three domains. Domain one is student achievement. Two is school progress, and there are two parts to that. So that's student growth and then relative performance. And then domain three is closing the gaps. For the calculation, um you're gonna take your your better of one or two, and then that's gonna be weighted seventy percent. And then domain three is thirty percent. So domain one, that student achievement domain, for the elementaries and junior highs, that's gonna be a hundred percent STAR. And then for the high schools and then for the district formula, it's forty percent STAR, forty percent CCMR, and then twenty percent graduation rate. The CCMR and the graduation rate are lagging by a year, so that's gonna be the for this year's projections. That's gonna include our twenty twenty-one class, but the STAR data is from twenty twenty-two. Domain two is school progress, and like I said, there's two parts to that. So you have your academic, your student growth, and then your relative performance, that's campus. So you've seen this uh visual, this chart here. Um what the academic growth does is it takes your previous year level and your current year level and then determines um how many points you would earn if necessary, it does a calculation, for the difference between your prior year and your current year to determine progress measure, which could possibly earn you half a point or a full point. Relative performance is going to take STAR and then for high schools and districts, the average of STAR and CCMR. And then it's going to determine where you fall when you compare yourselves to campuses or districts that are similar to you as far socioeconomic status goes. Believe you've seen this chart also, and this is our exact line um or a row for uh the district. We're in that seventy-two-point-one to seventy-three row. Um our socioeconomic status was seventy-two-nine. And so those values there in that uh gray-shaded area are gonna be our cut points that will go into the scaling formula. And then finally, domain three is that closing the gaps. So various student groups are going to be evaluated for various components to determine if um if they met uh the set targets. And not all of the components are used, um the same ones for elementary and junior high as for high school and district. So if you'll recall, um high school and districts take CCMR and graduation in place of academic growth and the student achievement domain score. So then this just shows you the weighting for the different components uh for each of those levels. So for elementary, middle school, academic achievement's thirty percent, growth is fifty, telepath, and then the student achievement are both ten. And then for high schools and the and district, uh the academic achievement is fifty percent, graduation is ten, telepath is ten, and then CCMR is thirty percent. And then again, graduation and CCMR are a year behind. So this just shows the the different targets. So each subgroup on each component has its own target. And if you meet the target, you get a yes. If you don't meet the target, you get a no. There is, there's not any points in this system for getting close or exceeding. Okay, so I'm now gonna move So I'm now going to move into the actual projection, now that I've kind of refreshed you on on the system. And some points to include are that everything up to this point that we're using in our projection has been provided to us by TEA. So star EOC spring data file, the star EOC December data file, and then the star EOC summer data file. Those are the three cycles used for EOC for this year's accountability. And then we have the one star three through eight, the one telepath K twelve, our graduation data file from the class of twenty twenty one. We're using our CCMR verifier data file right now from TEA. It doesn't differ drastically from the final one that we will receive in July. And we do a pretty a pretty solid job internally of projecting or monitoring our our CCMR progress for all for actually all of our cohorts. So right now, we can tell you what our our current ninth graders have for CCMR points because we're really focused on that. And so but we're not using our own, we're using the CCMR verifier from the state. We're also using the accelerated tester data file. That was a new rule brought into place last year, probably maybe the yeah, I believe last year, where accelerated testers, students that were in eighth grade in twenty eighteen and took and passed in EOC, they are using their SAT and ACT scores that they've taken in their high school years and then determining performance levels for that and putting them into accountability. They they want them to be in accountability in some way, shape, or form during their high school years. The data file that we received from them did not have twenty one, twenty two SAT or ACT data in it. So while we received the data file from TEA of our snapshot seniors that qualified, we didn't have the most up to date data. So we supplemented that data file with what we knew from our SAT and our ACT downloads for our district. So if a student took SAT or ACT in some other district, we're not going to have that in this data file. So that would be that that would make a minimal fluctuation, if any, but just wanted to be transparent with that. So using all of these data files provided to us and implementing as closely to the rules as TEA does without stalking their programmers for their code, we now create our our own internal projections. And so for I'm going to cover the district accountability projection at this point in time. And so I'll just kind of go section by section for so for domain one, academic achievement. We have three areas, star, CCMR, and graduation. So for our star, that's our approaches, meets, and masters divided by three, scaled, and then that's weighted forty percent. Then our twenty twenty one class, the percentage of the graduates from that class that met a CCMR criteria to earn a point, that value is scaled and then weighted forty percent. And then the best of our four, five, or six year, graduation, is scaled and then weighted twenty percent. Then the sum of all of those values gives us our scaled score of a seventy two in domain one. Moving down to two A, domain two A is going to be the sum of our growth points over the number of our tests that are eligible for growth. And so that value of seventy six percent raw, and that was scaled to that scales to a ninety for the district in domain two A. Domain two B, that relative performance, is our star plus our CCMR on that chart, which those values are then used to scale it. And that goes to a seventy eight. So the best of those three is that ninety. That's going to be weighted seventy percent and then move into our overall grade. And then domain three brings it in with the remaining thirty percent. And that's the percentage of our subgroups that meet their targets in those four components. And so that value, when we scale after we sum and do the weights according to the fifty, thirty, ten, ten, and then and then sum those, that is scaled, and that becomes a seventy two. So currently, we are projected for the district to have an overall grade of a B with a score of an eighty five. So I want to mention a few things and just kind of pause and say that there really has been, there should be acknowledgement for the the work of the district. As soon as we had received the twenty twenty one scores, I think, like like every other district, I mean, we were, we recognized that we needed to focus on growth. since TEA wasn't going to adjust their system in any way to account for the unfinished learning of students, that was a big priority. And Dr. Wertz mentioned that reading and math are the foundation. And I knew that as far as the state to recognize and then re- reward district and campus efforts, the focus had to be on on growth, especially reading and math. And I want to commend Dr. Brown and Dr. Buell, Dr. McDonald, the OSL executive directors and that team, the the campus principals and leaders, and most importantly, our teachers. They worked harder than they've ever worked before and in very dismal circumstances. So research and accountability can process data and and generate reports and and try and assist, you know, map out a path, closest path. But they took the path. And it was their hard work that helped our students grow and will continue to help our students grow. And it take takes a village. So Dr. Wertz and Academic Services, they were proactive with wanting to ameliorate any challenges faced faced by the campuses. And so when COVID variant absences were begun to become a burden and might have possibly interrupted or interfered, the growth that students were starting to make, they were there to provide assistance. So I just wanted to acknowledge the the efforts of the team and and thank the the teachers especially. before I move on, I wanted also note that our gains for reading were accelerated this year, and we are back to our twenty nineteen levels as far as our approaches, meets, and masters were our average. And we're on the way towards towards that progress in math and science. We dipped dramatically in math, and we know that. And so we made intentionally made that a multi year goal. So and we are on our way and progressing towards that. Also, to note, it won't be accounted for in this year, but our twenty two CCMR values have are exceeding our twenty nineteen. And I think that there's, like I said, we we won't reap the benefits of that in this year's A to F accountability. But there was an intentional collaborative effort on the part of the district led by Dr. McDonald and Dr. Zeski to to make that growth happen with CCMR. And that will have that positive contribution for A to F next year. So I'm going to move into projections for campuses. Please know that the high school calculation, as we reviewed, is different than for elementaries and junior highs. So you may not see as many of the high schools with as high of projections as the elementaries and junior highs, and a variety of factors contribute to that. So yeah, our twenty twenty graduation rates were historically high. And in order to meet that target, you have to exceed that. So the twenty twenty one class had to exceed the twenty twenty graduation rates. That was very difficult. And then CCMR with the removal of the ACT SAT requirement for college entrance, that kind of had a negative impact there on our on our twenty twenty one class CCMR values. And then English one, it was great that English one and English two didn't decrease last year, but that made it that much harder to get growth on English two this year, which is the only area for high schools to receive growth points in in reading. English one is not eligible for growth. So just wanted to say that as we review, you may notice that some of those high schools are not as as high as the elementaries and junior highs. So our projected A campuses, we have thirteen here. I'm not going to read these to you. I'll just kind of put the slide up and let y'all scan. Some usual suspects, but then some unusual suspects on that. we have thirty seven projected B campuses. Eighteen projected C campuses. And only four projected not rated campuses and not rated based on a projection of a D calculation. We are not projecting any F calculations. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Brown.
Good evening. So now we're going to talk about just some really specific campus celebrations and share some very great data with you all. We are super excited. I want to echo everything Dr. Wertz said and Dr. Lopez, just by the progress we've made this year and the work that we've done at the campus to be able to improve outcomes for students. You've heard this word several times today, and this has been our focus. It's a word that we've used all the entire school year, focusing on individual student growths and making sure that our teachers were very targeted and intentional about supporting every single student. And so growth is what got us to where we are today. So I want to highlight a few data points for you that I think are really, really powerful and relevant. And one is that all of our campuses that were previously rated a D or F are no longer a D or F or not rated. So all of these campuses are at least a C, and that is a huge celebration for our campuses that have worked tirelessly with targeted improvement plans and other targeted resources and support to be able to move the needle on student achievement. You'll see if the campus has an asterisk there, short and spear were two year F campuses in twenty nineteen. One is now a B and one moved to a C. You'll also see a note next to short elementary also was a comprehensive support school and a two year F school. If you're a comprehensive support school, you're in the lowest five percent of schools in the state, and short achieved a B rating. So we're very proud of all those schools. And as Dr. Lopez mentioned, we had no failing schools this year. We still have work to do, but we have no failing schools to report. We're very excited about that. You all know, a few years ago, we created the Strategic Support Network, and that was really to have a really intentional and focused effort with a specific number of schools who were traditionally underperforming and had more significant challenges. All of our schools in the Strategic Support Network did meet accountability with at least a C. All of those were Bs or Cs. So we're very proud of all of our SSN schools and their work this year. So just to highlight some specific supports at the SSN that's unique to them, they do have more strategic staffing, meaning we are more flexible in how we staff those schools to make sure that they have the intentional resource and support they need. That could come in the way of an additional assistant principal, a counselor, a class size reduction teacher. Some of those are the supports that have been offered to this specific group of schools. Our Office of School Improvement, which is a part of the school leadership team, we have instructional facilitators in in reading and math who've been on these campuses, really helping support, building capacity in the instructional leadership team to ensure they're able to plan with their teachers effectively and be able to monitor student outcomes more consistently. You've heard us talk about LAFA, which is Lesson Alignment and Formative Assessment and DDI, both two key priorities that we've engaged in the last couple of years. We're going to expand that even next year. All of our SSN schools are very data driven and are very aligned in their lesson planning and making sure that they are getting those quick formative assessments from our students daily to ensure that they are mastering the lesson, the learning that the teacher intended. Some other campus celebrations, I just want to highlight three campuses just to give you a snapshot. And really, we could do this for a ton of schools in our system. But I do want to highlight short. We talked about short for just previously, went from an F to a B. This this particular school year, we're very excited about them. And this school has been very intentional about best practices coaching for the last three years. They're one of our schools that received horizontal laser team coaching a few years ago, which is all around best practices. And so they really have embraced that best practices coaching support, and it's made a huge difference in how they lead their PLCs and also how they engage in data driven instruction. So at short, at least eighty percent of their students met their growth goal, which is an amazing accomplishment for a school that has traditionally struggled for 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 many years. So hats off to short elementary school, if you're watching. The second campus I want to highlight is Remensy Elementary School. Remensy has has gone from a C rating to an A. And we're very proud of Remensy teachers for implementing really targeted instructional DDI processes in all of their grade levels, and they've done it with fidelity. And we have a great partnership with Region eleven, and so Region eleven has done some coaching of the executive director around DDI practices. And then they and then the Region eleven coach watches the principal get coached by the ED. So it really has been a very synergizing relationship between Region eleven as relates to our DDI work. And that should say Remensy. But at Remensy, their two A goal, their two A was a ninety, so at least eighty two percent of the Remensy students did meet their target. So congratulations to Remensy for earning an A. And then want to highlight Morton Elementary School. Morton was a former D campus that is now a B campus. And to tell you a little bit about Morton, Morton also had a targeted improvement plan that was monitored. We've had school improvement team helping support them, their focus again on DDI and really quality tier one instruction, which you've heard us talk quite a bit about. Morton was one of our four schools who earned the Effective Schools Framework Grant. And so they have been getting support by Region eleven and E two L. We're very excited that Morton, at least eighty two percent of their students achieve their growth target, which landed them in the top twenty percent of Arlington ISD schools. So congratulations to Morton Elementary, all the teachers and staff. Again, we could highlight so many campuses who have a similar story. And ultimately, you'll hear the language that we're using consistently is data driven instruction, aligning our lesson plans, our lesson planning, and making sure that we are formatively assessing our students. We also want to highlight campuses that haven't just increased their overall score from twenty nineteen. So almost seventy percent of our campuses have had an increase in their overall score. So again, lots to celebrate there. You can see the listing of those campuses there. And then we have seventy eight percent of our campuses have increased at least by a letter grade. So from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty two, these are the campuses that have increased at least one letter grade, some even increased two letter grades. So hats off to all of these campuses, the teachers, administration, and everyone who's been supporting the work at these schools. And here are the campuses who had at least eighty percent of their students meeting their growth targets. So when Dr. Lopez talked about that two A, they had a scale score of ninety. That's a significant number of kids who met every single target that was set that was set for them based on scale score. So we're very excited and proud of all of these schools. And again, it's just a collective applause to everyone who's helped make this possible for our kids. And just to highlight our priority work this year that will continue, again, is student goal tracking. So kids know what their specific goal is for literacy and for math, the effective implementation of our data driven instruction practices, engaging in data talks with teachers and students, and then making sure that we're creating and designing really solid lesson plans and implementing them with fidelity and really making sure we understand where our kids are at all times on their path towards mastery of the objectives. So again, super proud of the collective efforts of everyone. We thank you all for your support because you've supported our our strategies and the work that we've done has been really helpful to help us reach our goals. And we're happy to answer any questions for you.
Are there any trustees with questions or comments? Whoops, let me try again, Mr. Will Banks. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler, and congratulations to everyone. I would have never dreamed I would have never dreamed that we'd be looking at this. Knew we were going to do it, but didn't imagine we would do it by this wide a margin. So, thank you. You know, everyone, Dr. Lopez mentioned, Dr. Brown and your staff, and Dr. Wertz, the support, and each and every single campus leader who worked their tail ends off, and of course, the MVPs, the teachers, who really went through a very tough year and, well, yes, years, but specifically this last year was very tough on them, and look at how they shined. So it's just amazing, really. So, Dr. Brown, since you're up there, we'll work backwards on my questions. So, DDI, you know where I stand on DDI, and my frustrations in years past, that it's, you know, a cornerstone of the Effective School Framework, and year after year, when, you know, before I was on this board and all through my first several years, it seemed like we were always just beginning and learning how to do DDI. We were never getting to mastery in DDI on all our campuses. But is it wrong to say that this proves that we're finally mastering DDI across the whole district?
We have made concerted efforts.
So maybe that goes a little too far?
And we still have work to do, but we certainly have seen a much broader understanding and implementation of data-driven practices, but there's still work to do, and we're going to continue that work next year.
Constant improvement, right?
That's right.
Constant improvement. So, no, you know, congratulations, and I think, I don't know, I mean, we'd all be guessing we were going to say how much that helped in terms of the success we see in this presentation, but you got to think it accounts for a good chunk, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, going back, you know, when you were on Morton, I'm sorry, I have to put my cheaters on. You mentioned that, well, and also speaking of Effective School Frameworks, I didn't know that there was a grant. What, you know, this is provided by TEA, what percentage of our campuses applied for it? Is it, was it only at Morton?
We had eight campuses who applied for the grant, and there were four that received the grant, and three out of the four hit at least eighty percent of their students meeting their growth target. And we think that's probably a combination of lots of concerted work at those campuses, too.
Yeah, and how much in terms of dollars was the grant?
The grant over for the four campuses was a little under four hundred thousand, if I remember correctly. And it's a two-year commitment, so we just finished year one, and then we have year two starting in twenty-two, twenty-three.
And we're going to see even greater growth.
We want As, we want As.
As?
Yep.
Awesome. Awesome. No, that's fantastic, I didn't know that grant existed. You know, you mentioned what you guys did there, is that what, pretty much what all the schools who received that grant utilized the money for? Grant which funded teacher professional development, instructional resources, and other operating expenses? Is that pretty much what the grant was used at every campus that received the grant?
Yes, also coaching, so they were coached around the Effective Schools Framework in connection with Region 11 as well. So everything around the ESF being our cornerstone of improvement efforts in our system.
All right, I think you've mentioned this before, but when you were talking about Short, you specifically mentioned horizontal laser tag teaming?
Maybe not tag teaming, just horizontal laser team. And that actually was, it started three years ago at Short, and in 2018, actually, so 2018, 19 was our launch year, not laser tag team, but laser team.
Sounds fun that way.
It sounds more fun, but they actually had fun. It was really, it was coaching for literacy and math, so really, they were kind of in the beginning of, they kind of launched the literacy and math coaching at Short, and they really embraced it and saw a lot of success.
So, I know this is a loaded question, we don't have data, any objective data, but we have a lot of gut feels, right? So, at Short and the huge gain that they made, what would you guess, and I know it peaches to guess, is the biggest contributing factor?
So many. I will say the infrastructure at that campus as relates to a culture of coaching, professional learning communities, they had more PLCs than probably any other elementary campus we had in the district. Leadership, the teachers' ability and willingness to embrace learning and get better, I mean, it was, it really was just a collective effort that really helped them get to this, to this rating. And actually, before COVID, they were on track to get a B, so they were on track to get a B a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I heard that.
Yes.
But no, I'm hopeful that, you know, going through the hardships we've gone these last three years and looking at the different strategies that we've used at various campuses, that we've got playbooks, not every campus is the same, and it takes a unique approach to each one to address each, their unique challenges, but, you know, it sounds like we're getting those things that we're really seeing solid results that we can attribute to those positive things that, you know, that groundwork that we laid at those campuses with specific strategies. And so that's where my interest is, is collecting those strategies that we can definitively say, this worked miracles at Short, this worked miracles here, and putting those strategies in our toolkit to be more effective when we do have a campus that's struggling and we can bring them back up and we're not on that fret list at the end of year four of constantly needing improvement. So, anyway, that's what I'm most excited about.
Mr. Will Banks, if I may, just real quick, because you brought up a good point, and I think Dr. Brown mentioned it, but I think I'm going to highlight it. That's at Short, they were one of the few campuses, probably in the state, who were so disappointed we didn't have a STAR in 2020. And then they were so disappointed that they didn't have a rating in 2021 because they wanted that rating. That's right, they were poised for that. And so, so that's just a tribute to their work, and I just sincerely appreciate their commitment. The other thing you mentioned that I think, I don't want necessarily to get lost, is that is where some of our math and literacy coaching started, before it became a strategy for the entire district. And who did that coaching?
E2L.
E2L, not to go back and cite this item here, but, but just as an example, sorry, I shouldn't have maybe even asked that question.
There's a good important data point.
Well, it was, it was, and I wanted to make sure we highlighted because that's really where that big strategy kind of started launching, because we started seeing, hey, this could actually have an effect if you do it systematically, and so it expanded and grew. But seriously, for Short, it is, it's something that that team has pulled together, and it was a delay in, you know, obviously STAR and all that, but very proud of them and all the schools, but I think we should highlight.
And I guess it goes without saying that Eric Zahn and his team deserve huge kudos. So I didn't hear anyone mention him, so I want to be sure to mention him.
Yes, our school improvement team.
And everyone on his team.
Jared Zahn, our instructional facilitators.
Jared.
And our coordinator also.
I mean Jared, Jared. I know that, he was my kid's principal. I should know that. I'm getting old. Okay.
Anything else, Mr.?
So not for Dr. Brown, would you like me to pass the baton and come back to Dr. Lopez and words later? Or keep going? Pass the baton? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, so, all three of you so much for the presentation, and the way that you delivered it was understandable to, of course, beyond those of us in education, and those that are watching at home, if their children attend these schools, if they're, you know, interested in, you know, looking at these schools, it's a celebration across the whole district. And to be facing a B rating, which is where we were before, prior to the pandemic, and we even knew a pandemic was coming, like Mr. Will Banks said, I'm just blown away. And this is, this is what we knew our staff was capable of, but it's just, I can't even wrap my brain around the achievements of our teachers, administrators, and staff. I'm just blown away. And thank you, and I know, Dr. Lopez, you recently called it unfinished learning. This is exactly why I think we should call unfinished learning that instead of learning loss. This ninety percent in student growth, we're obviously not losing anything, and if our teacher lost something, they found it, because that is incredible, incredible. Teachers can do anything, anything, and so to me, that domain 2A is what I am the most proud of. I'm so, so proud of everyone, and our students, of course. I am curious, because thinking about next year STAR, we know that the digital platform is now required. I'm curious, because I know that a lot of our campuses are already there, off the top of your head, I'm not sure who can answer this question, but about how many campuses already pulled the trigger and use that platform to take their STAR test? Sorry, sorry to put you on the spot, and if you don't have the numbers, that's okay, but it's just something I'm thinking about.
No, it's okay, so I can't tell you it was complete or not, but sixty percent of our elementaries were taken online, of our elementary tests were taken online, and forty percent were on paper. So how that falls across the fifty-four, I can't tell you, oh, this, this many were exclusively paper, but we, it's certainly something we can get for you, I just don't know what that number is.
Sure, sure, and the main reason why I'm asking is because I look at these two years, this year that we just finished, and then next year is kind of a, everyone is on different, I guess, tracks, and then we're going to have the same finish line, because some districts this year, they went the full gamut, and they, they required all online STAR testing. And I would argue that, and you guys might see it this way, too, those districts might have had a little disadvantage with this data because it was a big change, especially for our younger learners who weren't used to taking a literacy or math test on the computer. We, you know, aren't fully there yet, so I'm sure there are some implications for next year, how this will affect student performance, and so that's just something that I was curious about, and I'm sure that you guys are already thinking about how our assessments that we push out as a district can hopefully, best possible, match the assessment that the state, that the students have to take next year for the state. So is there anything else I want to add?
I would just add, Dr. Lopez, you may want to mention secondary, because you mentioned elementary.
Yes, so for secondary, I believe it was ninety-eight percent online, and those that, those that weren't online, it was due to needing to take a paper for accommodation purposes.
Right.
So that allowance will still exist moving forward. The state is going to require all online unless you meet an accommodation that...
Unless you have a 504 and IEP.
I can't speak exactly to what the criteria is.
Okay.
To be allowed to still do, test it on paper, it's, there are some changes.
Okay.
But it will be allowed, it'll be a very small percentage that would be allowed to do that, though.
But, and to your point, the vast majority of secondary is online, but elementary still is about sixty percent, I think is what you said.
Yes, sir.
Of the students who took it like that. So, yeah, that continues to be a transition, and next year, our CA's and assessments will be online, starting at the beginning of the year, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and I, you know, I see it as the biggest learning curve, I guess, for our third graders and, you know, younger kids, because they're not used to typing, you know, short constructed responses on the computer, let alone construct short constructed responses. So, you know, I know that you guys are already a step ahead, but our assessment is going to change next year for a lot of these guys. I only have one more question, and this might be a question for you, Dr. Wertz, I'm not sure, but it pertains to M-class first-grade end-of-year data. Wade back towards the beginning, sorry. I feel like I always make you do this. May go all the way back to the beginning. This was the slide, yes, yes, you had it, you had it, thank you. So I always have my eye on early literacy, and I have only heard great things about our M-class assessment. I've heard from teachers that's very accurate. Myself, as a parent, I get the reports, and I actually understand what it says. I can, I feel like I could do something concrete with it to support my reader at home. What I really had my eye on was, I guess, if you look at the students doing well and the students that are well below benchmark, the gaps in letter naming, phonemic awareness, and decoding concern me a little bit. Do you think that our current curriculum resources that we offer to our first-grade teachers and kindergarten teachers, for that matter, align with the science of reading? Do you think we're doing enough to address the shift that we're facing in literacy?
So two things I would say about that, yes. We have a, we have a curriculum that's designed just for this, that teachers should be doing at least thirty minutes a day in their classroom. The other thing I would say on top of that is, as we analyzed our data in terms of preparation for next year, you're going to hear us talk a lot about the Focus Five, and in reading, this is one of those areas, phonemic awareness and basically this general area for, in reading, the building blocks of reading. So what we'll be doing not only is making sure the training is shored up around that for teachers, and that teachers are receiving coaching about how to implement those things in the classroom, but we'll also be monitoring for implementation and looking for impact that's actually having on outcomes. When we designed the focused areas in terms of reading, we knew that the, for example, the balanced literacy model, there are several components, it's going to be very difficult for a teacher to master everything all at once, so we elevated those things we felt like were the initial starting points. This was one of those areas, and the way that we landed on that was by looking at the data to figure out like trends over years and time. What are those areas that continually are issues in our kids' reading? And then not only just this year, but they've been actually perpetually that problem for many years, and you're, you're actually hitting on a couple of areas that have been perpetually our problem. So, yes, to answer your question.
Okay, great, as long as we're addressing that, because to me, that early literacy, that is going to be the key that unlocks success in all other areas year after year.
That's right.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. Mrs. Mays?
Thank you, President Fowler. So I'll make my comments brief. My acronym, because that's what education is about, is G2. I think this all started off with grace and grew into growth, and I really, really like what I've seen. I really like the connection between the entire district, so yes, a thank you to our teachers, to staff, to the directors, to everyone that has been involved, and a huge congratulation to our students who did, who did the work, who listened and followed instructions, took advantage of the resources that were provided for them, and they did the work. Not surprised. We know that we have the staff that can do anything, and that's what they've done, and we know that we have students within this entire community that have the ability to be successful in a classroom. So to be able to really see it on paper, to then confirm what we know in our mind, which is why we do the things we do, is very exciting to me. I will say Theodore Roosevelt said, do what you can with all that you have, wherever you are, and I think that is exactly what has been done throughout this district at our different schools, so I'm just, I'm very, very excited. And it's one thing to say, particularly during COVID, oh my gosh, how are we going to reach our, how are we going to even meet our goals? But not only did we meet it, but we exceeded. And I think the reason we did that is a theme that we've kind of had here tonight, is we've become very proactive on things that we were already putting in place, but then we really pushed it and were able to actually exceed. So once again, thank you to everyone that has a piece in this district, which is everyone at every level, but congratulation to our students. And in the future, as we still see things continue to change, like you said, there's always room for improvement, which does not take away from success, but as we do move forward and start seeing some more of these challenges, I hope that these teachers and these students look back and say, you know what, we did it once and we can keep doing it. So I'm just, I'm very pleased for right now, and when we get good news, just want to marinate in it for a minute. to marinate in it for a minute.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Thank you, Dr. Lopez.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. Dr. Raish?
Thank you, President Fowler. I was going to say almost exactly what my colleague, Mrs. Mays, said, but she said it way better than I would have. So what she said. My only question I have is, so the SSN, I think it shows its value. Where does it go and what does it do without the focus of those campuses that are struggling? How does it morph into a support system for the district? Or does it, or can you describe what that looks like?
Yeah, that's, that's great. We would love to have those kinds of supports district-wide. I will say that we have increased our efforts with our instructional facilitators. We now have additional facilitators who are supporting non-SSN schools. So responding to the data that we see, if we see a school struggling in literacy, we may push out one of our instructional facilitators to help support them. The whole mission is to not have to have an SSN, that our schools will be so sufficient, self-sufficient and doing so well, they won't need that kind of intensive support. But for now, we just are isolating this few schools and saying, let's push in all of our efforts there to ensure that they are able to meet the needs of their kids and, and not be on any school improvement list.
Okay. Well, thank you. And if there is anything going forward that we need to consider that ties into the strategic plan and budgetarily, we're, we're all ears. The outcomes surely speaks for the efforts and the inputs. And, gosh, just think if we didn't have the pandemic, that's what we've said so much, where we would be. To see that we're basically holding steady with pre-pandemic, that's phenomenal. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Trustee Raish. Thank you, Dr. Raish. Anyone else? Thank you so much. What a, what a great way to end this year and our last school board meeting with such great news, that everyone is being successful and projection is moving high. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Oh, David Wilbanks, hang on. He snuck in on me. Okay.
I told you I had more questions. So I think this one's, uh, thank you, Dr. Brown.
Yes, sir.
And thanks for answering my questions. Dr. Lopez, you're up.
Uh, I lost my place now. Hold on, give me a second. All right. So we go to the A through F projections and your nice chart that explains how the calculations work right before the campus, right there, yeah.
That's cheat sheet.
Yes, that's a great cheat sheet because I always forget. It's, you almost need to be a rocket scientist or a Dr. Lopez to figure out how it all fits together. So, so we had a couple of bad years, and then we finally got kids in the classroom and we saw growth. And so we were able to use our two A score, which was a phenomenal 90. But my, you know, kind of projecting forward and kind of pitfalls and how we need to strategize going forward, looking at different scenarios that might present itself that we have to watch out for. Let's say we've maxed down on growth this year, and we're not going to have that two A and it reverts to domain one achievement. Are there any concerns there based on what you're seeing on raw scores and, and the achievement? If you just kind of look at, you know, what are average when you calculate the approaches, meets, and masters across the district or particular campuses? Are there areas of concern if that were to happen next year?
So for Dr. Lopez's answers, because she has all the answer on that, but I do want to add the disclaimer, an important one with that question. And we're not going to do it tonight because it would, it would not be healthy to keep going, but this system will likely change for '23. Commissioner has already put out a draft.
New formulas?
New formula and new ways to tie district performance to campus performance, CCMR effect or not effect, the fact that, that the, some of the ELAR tests are being combined. And so I just want to preface, Natalie has the answer because we've had that discussion, but just keep in mind that this entire system, in major ways, I would say, is going to be changing. Now, it's not approved yet, it's just a draft, and, but it's Commissioner draft that he's been sourcing out at the different service centers and different meetings that will change this specifically tied to the district performance and how you calculate it. Is that a fair way to say it?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Lopez?
Yeah.
But, but to your question, just straightforward, if we had this system next year, you can answer.
Can't, well, can I interject real quick and say how disappointed I am? Because until Dr. Lopez came along to explain exactly how this worked, it was all a mystery to me, and I'm a data guy.
Right. So she'll do it again for the '23.
So now I'm like, I gotta learn it all over?
You really want a crash course. You can come intern for a week as a research analyst.
Job security.
But I do think that there's still, to, to answer the question of maybe the hypothetical is like, have, have we, have we reached a ceiling now? I don't believe that's the case.
Yeah, and I, nor do I, but let's say it did happen in that we maxed out and we saw little to no growth next year, that hypothetical, and this stayed the same. So we're moving from a two A weight on our factor to a one, a domain one with our raw scores, isn't that how it works?
It wouldn't go to domain one, though, it would go to two B because it would take the best of your, of your one, two A or two B.
I'm sorry, two A, two B. Okay. So if that went down, and then domain one is what percent of the overall?
Well, you wouldn't use domain one. So if.
It would just be two A or two B.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, if the scenario that you're, you're suggesting is that two A is not as good and it's in, in, let's say, let's say it's a 70 or something, I'm going to make up a number. Well, if two A dropped to a 70, then we would take the 78, which is the two B because you take the best of one, two A or two B. So both of the domain two A and the two B would have to drop below that 72 of our domain one score for us to take the 72.
Seventy-two.
Mm-hmm.
And, and this system, this system has so many, thanks to Natalie's, the last board meeting, she was back there working on, on the data file, so many variables that that's really not an easy question I posed, and, but because there's so many.
Let's make it easy.
Yeah.
So I focus on the raw scores. I average, like the formula says, because of you, the averages meets a masters and look at where that is and we're, look at where we are versus our nears and peers. Now, we don't have that data, it won't be out until Friday, except for in our EOCs. And I, so if the E, you know, I don't know that EOCs necessarily correlate how three through eight works, but I did that analysis on the EOCs in algebra and English one and two and looked at our 12, our cohort, sorry, I missed, so cohort of like-sized districts that are similar economic disadvantage. And, you know, we were, we were in that analysis just in the bottom half of those 12 districts.
Okay, yeah.
So that's, that's my only cause for concern. And if we didn't, you know, I anticipate, I fully anticipate that we're going to have a lot of growth next year and have an equally successful, because we're, we're much better now at DDI and a lot of those core foundational, high-lever strategies. But when I look at the EOC and I assume, and, but hopefully, you know, and I assume on Friday when the other scores come out, where we look versus, where we compare versus our nears and peers, that, you know, didn't we used to, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Cavassos, when Dr. Barlow was here, we had, and before we adopted HB3 goals, we had a goal that amongst those similar districts, we were going to be in the top 75%.
Right. Top quartile and, and.
Top quartile.
And as I started this part of the presentation, this is the beginning of the story, it really is, it's, it's a big part of it. But we still have comparative when that data is released, when it's released as a data file, which is a lot more stable for PIM snapshot and things like that. That's coming in August, like every year, and, and I think that's something that will further this analysis of our work and, and really set the goals for the following year, for this coming year and things like that. So yeah, this is the beginning of the story, and so far, it's a good one.
And since there is still that room to grow, I believe that we will still be able to use two A in future years regardless of how the system changes. It's something that we're, we're not done. So I, I think that we still will continue to get students to grow. So.
Okay. And that's good. I'm, I'm equally optimistic in that area, but at the same time, I also want us, our kids to be performing, you know, at the top end of our peers and not have districts like Pasadena, like, you know, off the charts, skunking us and, and our other peer, our, our other peers. So my last question, so thank you, Dr. Lopez, and thank you for all the work that you've done. Kind of explain this system, and I'm sure you'll explain any new system equally as well when we get that. But, so my last question is on screeners. So, Dr. Wertz, you're up. So the, you, you alluded to it earlier when I was looking at some of this screener data. You know, ultimately, our, our adopted HB3 goal is STAR-related. And then some of the way this screener data is presented, it's hard to extrapolate out where that growth is occurring to, and correlates with what we'll see on this, on the STAR. So, correct me if I'm wrong, did we adopt interim goals that were tied, tied to these screeners so that we could, we could actually see objective, you know, when you present this data, especially the beginning of the year to the middle of the year, or the middle of the year to the end of the year, that we see that we're on target with that particular data set? Knowing that it's difficult to extrapolate, extrapolate out with some of these to what that would actually ultimately mean on the STAR?
So, no. The way that the, the board adopted goals was based on the proficiency level at the end of year, it, as defined by the screener. And the reason we did that is because there, you have to do a model, a statistical model that projects towards third grade STAR, and you have to start with the grade level that's taking the assessment, and then they actually reach STAR and you start to find that relationship between their previous scores and where they landed on STAR. So it takes multiple years to do that. Dr. Lopez will be doing that for all of our screeners as we progress through time, but it will take us a few years to get to that point. Eventually, what we'll do is we'll be able to land on, these are the cut points you would need on the kindergarten assessment, that if all things stayed consistent, this would project you to have a certain score in third grade STAR down the road. But it's going to take us a few years to get there simply because they're not correlated to each other.
Yeah, I think, you know, if you look at like one of the last ones you presented, the, the math end of year by grade, how many were advanced, proficient, basic, and those add to 100%? Yeah. Yeah. The one right before that, yeah, there.
Okay.
So it would be nice if for, and this is M-class or?
This is math inventory that we're discontinuing. Yeah. But I get the point. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it'd be nice to know that when this was presented that, yeah, that 15% advanced is above or below what our target was for end of year.
So, oh, I see what you're saying. You're wanting to see the real, so we can show you, you're wanting to know, did we, did we hit the target that was established for the end of year for, say, first grade mathematics on the screener?
On the screener.
Yes. I understand. We do have, we, you did, the board did set goals for screener achievement by grade level. We were reporting out basically what percentages we're landing on each one. I think what you're asking is which, which grade levels on which screeners did we actually reach the goal target or not, and we can send that to you. I think that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I understand.
I thought we did adopt this.
Yeah, you're correct.
Okay. Good, good, good. All right, yeah, so we could see that data.
Yeah, no problem. One thing I just wanted to say in reference to your previous question, Ms. McMorrow, just to make sure that, I failed to say this, but I want to use this as an example. When you're looking at the, for, for example, the first grade M-class, these bottom numbers, you want them to be negative because that's the, the reduction in the number of students or percentage of students that are actually landing in below or well below. You want those numbers to be negative. The larger the negative number, the better, and you want the upper numbers to actually be positive. So you're, I'll give you a quick example. So in phonemic awareness, we had 19% of the less students in well below than we did at the MOI point. It got better, is what I'm trying to describe. Does that make sense?
Yeah, they, they all net to zero on each row. So you gain from one, you lose from the other.
That's correct.
You want to gain from the good ones.
You want your, you want your, you want the, the below and the well below to be negative, and the bigger the negative, the better it is because that means they're moving to the upper parts.
Right.
Thank you for pointing that out because I've seen so, we've been, this is such a lot. I'm looking at that, and at a glance, it looks like that, that's, you know.
They're failing.
They're failing.
Right, but it's the opposite.
Yeah, so I'm really glad you clarified that. Thank you.
No, it just means they've moved up to the upper levels.
Yeah. You're welcome. Okay.
Any other trustees? Thank you, Dr. Wertz.
You're welcome.
We are now ready for superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you. Thank you, President Fowler. And a brief report here, sharing, congratulations to everyone involved for making our camp innovation at the Dan Diaperd Center, you should see some pictures there, a success. Over three weeks, we had more than 500 students take advantage of, representing 70 campuses, taking advantage of the camp that focused on innovative problem-solving, critical thinking with technology, students from fifth through 10th grade, attended this free camp, worked with robots, drones, and gadgets. Plenty of coding going on, outstanding effort and support by our teachers and our students. So congratulations to them. On the topic of innovative camp, Martin High School recently hosted a camp for quantum You should have joined it, but.
No, my daughter.
There you go. Like camp innovation, there was a heavy focus on STEM as a week-long camp focused on modern physics and physics experiments, engineering design, 3D planning, coding, work with internet security, all with a program with UT Arlington, a partnership with UT Arlington. So congratulations to them. This is, the camp director was Dr. Joel Batzler, who used to teach at Lamar High School. So she was the one that directed that. And then finally, a thank you, a continued thank you to First Christian Church for the support they have had for Blanton Elementary. The church continues its annual tradition of partnering with the school to send 60 students to Tarrant County College as part of the College for Kids program. A three-week program allows elementary students to take classes like robotics and theater at the TCC Southeast Campus. Blanton campers were fully sponsored for transportation and all the support that they needed, no cost to them, allowing some of the younger learners an opportunity to see what college is all about. So over time, more than 500 Blanton students, thanks to the generosity of First Christian Church, have participated in this program, which we had to pause for two years because TCC had to pause that, but we're back. And so congratulations to the Blanton students and thank you sincerely to First Christian Church for their continued support of Blanton Elementary. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have any school board members with reports? Ms. McMorrow?
Yes, I was able to take my son over to Morton Elementary to visit the Arlo Bookmobile, and it was a really neat experience because Arlo stands for AISD Raises Literacy Outcomes. And our library media services department, in partnership with our education foundation who provided a grant to make this bookmobile possible, they're driving all around Arlington. who provided a grant to make this bookmobile possible, they're driving all around Arlington every single Saturday throughout the whole summer to give away free books. They go to Elrod's Grocery Store, they go to many of our campuses around town. This Saturday, actually, they will be at Anderson Elementary from nine to ten a.m., Trinity Trace Apartments in seven six oh one four from ten thirty to eleven, and then Arbroke Park Apartments from eleven fifteen to eleven forty-five. They drive all around. That's just this Saturday. And it was really neat to see the families within walking distance, just coming up to the parking lot, getting books and going home. So I really appreciate the work that they're doing. It's hot out there, and Arlo is great, but it is not air-conditioned. But they are literally spreading literacy all around the city, and no questions asked, it's it's a book giveaway. So I appreciate them, and it was just awesome that they're offering this, so shout out to them and Leslie Conno specifically. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. Any other reports? No? And Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Willbanks, but we are going, we we requested screener goal data from Dr. Wertz to be emailed to the board. Is there any clarification you need to add?
No.
Okay, and that's it.
He knows what we need.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. On behalf of the entire Board of Trustees, I hope you have a very safe and wonderful Fourth of July, and remember that we will be on the A I S D float on Monday at the Arlington Fourth of July Parade. So watch for us and listen for the ringing bell as we go by of the schoolhouse. That concludes our meeting. Thank you.